Well, folks, before we officially begin, welcome. Thank you all so much for being here. Just a little FYI, if you've never been here before, because of the shape of the room, we hear every whispered conversation up here. So if you want to have a little conversation or anything, if you could just take it out in the hallway, that would be so helpful. But this is great, seeing this room full.
On record?
Hey. Good evening and welcome to the City of Lincoln City City Council meeting for Monday, April 23rd, 2018 at 6:00 PM. If you wish to speak on an agenda item or non-agenda item, please sign up on the sheet near the entrance door to the council chambers. You'll be called to speak during the public comments section. Comments or testimony on agenda items listed under public hearing, public comment will be taken at that time. Roll call, please.
Don Williams?
Here.
Dick Anderson?
Yes.
Riley Hoglund, he should be here. Deanna Hinton?
Here.
Judy Casper?
Here.
Susan Walke?
Here. Mr. Hoglund heading down the hall.
Well, we'll wait. Well, we'll go ahead and do it. If you could all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow. That sounded great. Thank you all so much. All right, we have a little bit of a change in the agenda with the council's okay. We're going to move the proclamation reading up. And I need an okay for the proclamation. You've all seen it and have your approval to read that?
Yes.
Okay. And we're going to move that ahead of the oath of office of the swearing-in. So, yes. To recognize National Police Week 2018 and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are more than 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the City of Lincoln City Police Department. Whereas there have been nine, excuse me, 58,627 assaults against law enforcement officers in 2016 resulting in approximately 16,677 injuries. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC. Whereas 360 new names of fallen heroes have been added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 129 officers killed in 2017 and 231 officers killed in previous years. Whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 30th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2018. Whereas the Candlelight Vigil is a part of the National Police Week, which takes place this year on May 13th through 19th. Whereas May 15th is designated as Police Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and the US flag shall be flown at half-staff. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Lincoln City formally designates May 13th through 19th, 2018, as Police Week in Lincoln City, Oregon, and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across this nation. And I'll be signing it this day, Mayor Don Williams. Thank you all.
Mayor Williamson, City Council, it is my pleasure to bring this proclamation forward for you to read tonight. I also wanted to let you know that you'll find at your desks there these blue ribbons and the blue wristbands with the blue line that says LCPD. I encourage you to wear these in support of our police officers. And the blue ribbons are for tying on your vehicles on May 15th to show your support for our local police officers. I'm really happy that we were able to do this for not only my coworkers, but for the officers of this community who put their lives on the line for us every day and protect our neighborhoods and keep us safe. And I just want to say, I couldn't be prouder of the police that we have working for us, and it's a pleasure to work with them on a day-to-day basis because they do our city an amazing job and are very respected by our community. And again, thank you very much for the proclamation. I'm really happy that we were able to recognize them appropriately.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, next on our agenda, we have moved the, no, I've already moved that. Oath of Office Swearing In Ceremony of Interim Chief of Police Jerry Palmer. So I think we need Mr. or Chief Palmer up here?
He's right over there. He's trying to hide.
Where are you going? No, no, let me get to that.
Behind the pillar.
I, Jerry Palmer.
I, Jerry Palmer.
We will follow my oath, solemnly swear.
We will follow my oath, solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution and the law.
Always support the Constitution and the law.
Of the United States and the State of Oregon.
Of the United States and the State of Oregon.
And the charter and ordinances of Lincoln City, Oregon.
The charter and ordinances of Lincoln City, Oregon.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of police.
Faithfully discharge the duties of police.
For the City of Lincoln City, Oregon.
For the City of Lincoln City, Oregon.
To the dust of my borough.
To the dust of my borough.
To the borough of Lincoln.
Hey. And if there's a way we could get an introduction to Mrs. Chief? To Mrs. Chief, that would be great. Not everyone knows her. Well, I know you're all here for the paving project update, so we'll get right to that.
Are we done with the flags?
We're going to recess for 15 minutes for refreshments in the hallway.
He cried everything.
What a sound.
Yep. We drove out in the woods and had lunch, and she's like, "It's so good. It's so nice to have you here."
I asked my girlfriend to marry me today.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Lot of crowd, big crowd.
I drove up from O'Lawley. I sent her a video of me, I rode my bike up there. She was just, I just, she wasn't there, of course, inside. Took me to that spot. She, she, she first, that's what she first, she's like, "Why you taking that? This is old nerve road." She's like, "I gotta call my friends and tell them, man, I hope you better put your phone down." And when I asked her, she's like, "Shut up." She's like, "She's not gonna do it." And I'm like, "Okay."
That's exciting.
So, so yes, so it's good. So it's good. No, it's fantastic. Fantastic. It's fantastic.
Fantastic.
Oh, yeah. Well, not always. The two girls are one year apart, so here's the, you know, it's all good.
Total bomb, total bomb. Just no, no.
She went to make, so I had her back there. She has to do it. So she is something. So it's really, it's really good. It's really good. So that's good.
You got a date or?
No, not yet, not, not, not any. When I know, you guys will know.
Well, expect me, right?
Yeah, yeah.
They're comparing this jewel, but not last jewel.
Yeah.
2032, this is.
Yeah, so nervous.
I don't know. Yeah, you know, I knew, she, I knew before, I knew, I knew, this is so, so different, so special.
A dream.
You know, write poetry. Good. So, yeah, I call it.
I told him about the, you know, bed, and said, "I gotta get married to him." I'm not getting married.
Just because that was, or not, like.
On his birthday, the first time we were together on the birthday. Oh, I guess.
If I had the ring on a birthday, mine would. Her birthday, her birthday is on the 19th.
Is it Earth Day?
No. Oh, today, just today, just today, this afternoon.
On your lunch break?
Yes. I couldn't wait. It wasn't perfect timing. I couldn't wait.
Did you tell Johnny?
I, I told Linda, because they're out of town, so I told Linda.
How long do we have to keep this imagined?
Cheryl, they're, they're ready to hand right now.
Pauline, well done. I wish I could mention something tonight.
I bought a house in Rileymont, D. Thank you.
I will.
I'm pretty proud of my age.
We are all very impressed.
Today. He said, "You should tell Jeremy or put in the news."
Like, something's different now.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's hope not.
So they listen to trash.
Well, they'll need a place to sit down and think.
Did it feel any better?
Yeah, I kicked it.
Hey.
Awesome.
Drugs.
Those help. Those help. I think Dick said drugs helped him get.
Yeah, so I found it out.
Is yours new?
Two thousand.
No, no, it's a 92. I just got it.
Yeah, 15 minutes, my eye. It's a joke. I want my last minute on earth to be an NBA minute.
Yeah.
Hey, Lila, how are you? What's that?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah.
Good, good. Just hearing from you. Oh, oh, yes, yes, yeah, yeah. Okay, well, I don't, no, I don't want, we need a trash can. I think it's just my frustr- No, and I don't want anything special for me. But it's, it's a frustration, that it seems something so simple to do. Yeah, yeah, and it's something we can order online.
Yes.
Again, I'm, I'm not, well, I am a little, mine's not such a walking area, you know, say, the ocean lake. Well, what really bothers me is, you know, the, the door part is wood, and then that paint starts flaking, and then you open the trash, and it's just disgusting in there. It's like they haven't cleaned in a year, and I don't know if that's true or not. But, you know, power washing, I don't know if that's my job. That's just one of those things. It's just, yeah, they just get really ratty. Because I had one out front of my cafe coming down from school. Gross. I think the moon was invaded by the Japanese. I mean, I think they were part of the Cannon Beach Battery. You know, you can do a fundraiser, take a whack at the bunkers, you know, sledgehammer, let the young bucks. But see, even that's okay. But I think we can, I mean, I was looking, I'm going, geez, if we did rocks, if we, you know, did, what's it called? Sorry, class, accident, bye. What do you do, that plaster? And so you can put stones in.
You sure did a neat job.
You know, if you want to take the Rock Your World people and that thing they do, the rock finding, hey, we're trying to collect 20,000 rocks, and we're going to do a project with the school.
Yep.
I'm fine with that.
Right, right.
But the interiors are horrible. Yeah, and it'd be so much better. Well, I did that on my own at the cafe, but I paid everyone.
Aren't they going to do that, like, after summer season?
On a hot day.
They're not going to do it tourist time. Just taking him down.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Hey, Lila.
Well, what do you say? I can do it. You're ready. Yeah, huh?
Everybody wants it.
We're done, I'm sending Ron out. It was supposed to be 15.
Not all the way down. Oh, okay. Okay, so I can tell him that it's to the maximum capacity of which it is, because it's like every time I see that.
There was one spot.
Well, it's, it's, it's basically in front of Judy's house, all the way up, you know, until in front of the business I work at. Johnny Murres, everything else too. And then at 37, 16, five down there. Oh. I want to know that. Physically.
And I'll look and see if I did the last two.
Huh?
He said that.
So we didn't do that.
Well, there's still parallel parking. There's diagonally parking, that, that one parking.
I thought so. Right. There were two pages.
I think it's fine. I'm just doing my.
That goes into 21, so.
She wanted to know about, if we were talking about the roundabout tonight.
It's on the agenda. It's on the agenda.
Where?
It came back. Yeah.
Here, where, 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 where?
Public meetings, so now they're, it's coming back to be.
Tonight?
Yes.
Was that the Port Lane Improvement Award?
Yes.
Oh, God.
16. Oh, here, cheers.
Uh, yeah, cheers.
We ate it through the whole plan. We ate it what? Through the whole plan. Oh, all right. For the only. I don't, I think it's a good thing they keep talking about it. Well, that's what I thought when I first came. But having sat here for many months now, I see why. One of them is to, you know, be able to apply for grants through.
I don't know why, just blew past this one. We're just voting on the funding, right?
Of county coordination.
Not the design.
Think about, it's like, suppose there's, you know, debris clearing when there's an emergency. It's that.
Okay, so this is the final plan.
Oh, you are such a naysayer. I think it's important to have this. What? To do this?
It's hot.
There's money there.
Are you ready to reconvene?
Out of town tomorrow through Saturday. Mornings are preferable, but I can be, I like banging stuff out before 10.
How else are you going to coordinate? Okay, we'll.
No, I'm a 4:30 in the morning guy.
I used to be biased 30, and now I'm 7:30.
Be somewhere.
On record?
All right, we're back in business here. I think we're going to make it. All right, as I've shifted everything around, I've lost where I am. We are at Consent Agenda. Regular Meeting Minutes of Work Session, August 7th, 2017. Regular Meeting Minutes of Municipal Broadband Internet Forum, September 16th, 2017. Regular Meeting, really, from 2017? Wow, okay. Regular Meeting Minutes of Workshop, October 17th, 2017. Meeting Minutes, I'm sorry, Regular Meeting Minutes of Work Session, November 20th, 2017. Regular Meeting Minutes of Work Session, December 4th, 2017. Regular Meeting Minutes of Regular Meeting, April 9th, 2018. Intergovernmental Agreement for County Building Official Revised HVAC Purchase and Installation Award, Paving Northwest 68th and 69th Construction Award. Anyone have a?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could I pull number seven?
Seven, okay. Sorry?
Seven.
The regular meeting minutes?
Yes, I have a correction.
Okay.
Oh, what do you?
Mr. Mayor, could I pull eight and 10?
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Get a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make the motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of two, three, four, five, six, and nine.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. Counselor Casper?
Yes, on item number seven regarding April 9th meetings under J, Special Order Business, number 10 broadband. I'd like to make corrections to the last three statements, which I think more, more reflective of what we discussed during our discussion, to say, council consensus to do three things. Number one, determine who are the underserved students slash learning population in Lincoln City. Two, determine if accessibility to broadband is adequate for this population group. And three, determine what strategies and possible solutions will make service more accessible. And I believe that summarizes what we had discussed at that meeting.
If I might, and I'm sorry, I have to open that up again, I'm not remembering what I read. Did we also have included in their discussion of, during the licensing talks, to request slash demand more bandwidth? Because that was part of the discussion when Tony came up and?
No, because we talked about bandwidth capabilities were already in existence. Further broadband could be purchased, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, he just said, we can have more, we just have to either buy it or squeeze them for it in our, that's the wrong word, negotiate it.
Yeah, I don't think we agreed with that. It was a.
No, I wasn't looking for agreement, just saying we discussed that.
Yeah, but I, this one, these three items, for clarity, is what we agreed on as far as moving ahead.
Right, okay.
And I think that, that was your.
Right.
Just going for clarity there.
Yes, just the last three.
Fair enough, okay.
So, clarification.
I'd make the motion to approve item seven with these new clarification wording.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Councilor Walkie, I need for you to pull your microphone over, I think, because we're not hearing you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, hearing none, all, uh, motion carries. All right, Council Anderson, eight and ten.
Yep, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, my only question on this, since we saw this item last meeting, was trying to get, uh, maybe from the attorney, the significance of these changes, it didn't seem real relevant, uh, but maybe there's something hidden.
Um, no, the, the issue was simply that, uh, the county attorney hadn't gotten back to us by the time we had our last meeting, so, um, these changes are what they've requested, but I don't see any issue with them.
I'd move for approving, uh, item number eight.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries, number ten.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm just wondering, I'm asking that item ten really be pushed over to, uh, um, under item sixteen, um, it seems to, if I read it right, the additional money comes from approving, uh, item sixteen, so at this point, you know, if we approved ten, it would be an unfunded item?
Okay, I guess we just needed a consensus to move things, we don't need, we're not voting on it.
Not yet.
Council okay with that?
Yes.
All right, um, yeah, so, but I don't need a motion to remove it from the consent agenda?
We're not removing it.
I know, but it's not under the consent agenda anymore, and I'm just curious if that makes a difference.
Well, it was removed from the consent for discussion, so if you want to move it to later, after item sixteen, that would be the appropriate.
Okay, that's fine, just wanted to make sure if I had to have a motion, keep things square and legal beagle. Okay, that takes care of that, right? Okay. Comments from citizens present on agenda, non-agenda items, uh, I didn't get a sign-up sheet run, or, so, if, whoever, if you're ready, come on forward, that's great, we're not gonna make you wait. Okay, if I could just, uh, speak clearly in the microphone, it does move around the table and up and down, and just give us your name, and we're ready to go.
I'm Betty Kamakawa, and I'm running.
Pull that down just a little bit.
Okay. I'm Betty Kamakawa, and I am from Toledo, and I have lived in the county for twenty-two years, and I'm running for county commissioner, and I'm going to all the city council meetings and just saying hi to everybody, and, um, and letting you know why I'm running for county commissioner. Um, basically, I feel like we need a different direction in the county. Um, I'm running because I feel that the county commissioners should be coalition builders, they should be bringing the cities, the, um, towns, the tribe, the nonprofits, the for-profits, all the businesses in the area together, and it, to, um, do things like mental health, and housing, and, and anything else that the county, people of the county need. Um, I feel like they're about ten years behind in housing, that they didn't do their job. Um, when the housing crisis happened, they should have foreseen, we already had homeless people, that we were gonna have even more homeless people, and they didn't work towards adding housing as it got, things got better. Um, and now we're in a big, serious situation where we don't have enough housing for everybody. Um, on that, in the area of mental health, they, we have done nothing to get detoxification centers here for alcohol and drug abuse, we have no treatment centers for youth or for adults that are in, in treatment centers. Um, personally, I've had, I have three daughters, and I had to have one of them in a treatment center in Portland, and had to drive there two days a week, and I really needed to be there three days a week to support her, and it's really hard on families and on the person that's in the center when you can't support them, they need to know that you're there for them, and that helps them to get better. And so, we need that here in the county, available to our families and our, our, uh, even our homeless people, anybody who wants to get better, we need those services available, and the county needs to work with other agencies, and with the hospitals, and with the school district too, to provide those services and find the funding for that. Um, and the last thing I want to say is, um, I disagree with the fact that they compartmentalize their jobs, that they concentrate on a certain area, and they, they don't seem to be interested in learning about the other areas, and I feel that if you're gonna compartmentalize like that, then you need to switch your jobs at least once a year, probably twice a year, so that you learn about everything going on in this, in, in Lincoln County, and what your constituents need. You represent everybody in the county, whether they voted for you or they didn't vote for you, and that's what I wanted to tell you, so thank you very much, and have a great night.
Thank you, Betty.
Thank you.
Good luck. Uh, anyone who did not sign up, wish to speak, now is the time. Seeing no one, we move on.
Council?
Yes.
Your honor, you had an item on here for, uh, on the consent agenda for the HVAC purchase and installation, and that item talks about, um, the budget is a hundred twenty-eight thousand, and it talks about another project that's not going forward, and so there's a hundred thousand available, so there's funds available. Um, you have a council rule about, uh, roll call votes on, uh, usually when you're spending money, and I know you did this on consent, but, uh, it might be a good idea to just go ahead and, and do a roll call vote on this one?
Would you give us a verbiage for motion?
Um, just the motion to affirm the HVAC purchase and installation award, item E-nine on consent, um, by roll call vote.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Uh, hearing none, roll call please.
Williams?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
And Walkie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you, sir, appreciate that. Okay, uh, okay, so I've got the proclamation moved up, Solid Waste Advisory Committee, correct? Am I right on track here? Okay. So Solid Waste Advisory Committee presentation. And just a quick name, keep the mic close.
Good evening, um, my name is Mark Salins, I'm the Lincoln County Solid Waste District Program Manager, and I guess the first thing I observed is, I was talking with Tina French earlier, and we thought all those good people that were in here, all excited about trash and recycling, but apparently they've seen the presentation already, so, sorry about that. Um, in all seriousness, um, as I get started here, I wanted to highlight the fact that you probably have one of the best solid waste advisory committees that the county has had in a long time, and that is reflected through the development that's going on in this material management plan. Um, basically, we have all the cities involved, um, there's a, a county, county representation other than myself, I serve as staff, and under the revised setup for the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, all three franchised haulers, um, participate, and this plan has been under development month after month after month, by in essence, all of your experts in waste and recycling management for the last year. So, people always do this, and I always wonder why it doesn't move.
Down arrow, here.
Down arrow, there we go. Okay. Um, so, I don't want to take a lot of time, and obviously, as you've seen, the, the other comment I'd want to make as we move into this, is you'll see that the plan says draft final or final draft, um, should you decide to support this plan tonight, it doesn't mean you're supporting, uh, typos that might still be in there, there's a few sections where we still have to add a little bit of text, um, but we are on a tight timeline, uh, this needs to be wrapped up by the end of June, and we actually have to have it adopted by the Board of Commissioners sometime in June. So we're gonna touch on a little bit of background, and then I'll give you a brief overview of the plan, the focus is on the plan recommendations, the whole reason why we set about doing this, we set a goal of, of finding at least three things that would make a difference in solid waste management in the future, and then as you'll see in a couple of slides here, the transition to materials management rather than just solid waste. So in December of twenty fourteen, uh, by way of a little bit of why did we do this, um, all the, uh, cities and waste sheds went through a process working with DEQ, where we adopted a new, uh, thirty-five percent recovery goal, and I, I think all of you understand that that's basically the amount of recyclable materials divided over the, the total waste and recycling in the county, and by twenty, uh, twenty-five, a thirty-seven percent goal. That didn't seem that far-fetched at the time, because we had actually already, one year, achieved thirty-eight point six percent. Then the China situation happened, and we'll touch on that in a minute. So during twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen, the, the Solid Waste Advisory Committee had a lot of discussions about how a lot of the, the really easy recycling's already taken care of, a lot of the things that you're trying to deal with now, um, have very little value to them now, meaning the discussions back then, costing an awful lot of money to really do anything effectively with them, and the big one, uh, we knew that the Georgia Pacific Mill, uh, would soon stop burning hog fuel, which is where an awful large portion of the woody debris in our county, and we have a lot of it, uh, was going, that's considered a reuse, if you will. And then finally, we were fortunate in getting fifty percent of this effort, uh, paid for by the new grants program from DEQ. So in the following slides, in terms of a little bit of history, I wanted you to, to get a snapshot of, yes, we are asking for support for our new materials management plan to take us into the future, but I also wanted you to be able to see just how impressive, uh, recycling has been handled in Lincoln County since way back in nineteen ninety-nine, an awful lot of rural counties around Oregon don't do nearly as well, a lot of them don't even have curbside recycling. So in this first slide, um, that's just the overall history, going all the way back to actually ninety-two, and this was without, um, this percentage doesn't include what's called a two percent credit, we actually get, well, up until, uh, DEQ eliminated it recently, during this entire history, up until the last couple of years, we received a two percent additional credit because of our backyard composting program, so, for instance, you go to Tina's and decide to buy a backyard composter, or what have you, you got two percent more, this doesn't include that. So you can see there was a steady build, if you compare that to the state of Oregon, um, actually, Lincoln County stayed, kept pace quite well, uh, with the state, and the reason I point that out is, as most of you are probably aware, ninety-five percent of the people are in the metro region, right, and they have a very huge investment in their waste and recycling infrastructure, they have a lot of capabilities that we don't have in our small town, and yet, uh, with our three devoted, uh, companies and the efforts that have been made, we've done quite well. And then lastly, the black line in this case is actually, um, tons of recycled material, and so, it's not quite as clear, but you'll see as we moved into two thousand and six or so, the amount of recycled materials sort of went down, and yet our recycling rate continued to go up. The only explanation for that is that people are actually starting to pay a little more attention to not generating as much trash, and of course, that's relatively easy during a recession, because you don't spend as much, but in essence, the take-home message is recycling continued to increase, even though waste, um, didn't. So in general, the county has done a really good job in the last twenty-five years, and I also wanted to highlight that because it's not portrayed quite as, quite as nicely in our report, the fact is that the amount of recycling we're doing right now, you know, it looks a little bit flat compared to where we were ten years ago, simply because of this, um, sort of recession period that we're in, recession meaning we, dealing with recyclables. But, again, comparing to the state, in nineteen ninety-nine through two thousand and twelve, the state managed to increase their recycling goal twelve point nine percent, and by the state, again, I mean, most of that being controlled by, uh, the Portland area, and they've got a very robust program there, we did seventeen percent. In the last, uh, little period, two thousand and six to two thousand and twelve, again, the state increased six point two percent, Lincoln County by ten percent, and, um, I guess, I just want to underscore, that's, that's due to the fact that you have the right mix of counties and people working on these issue, or right mix of companies and people working on these issues. So, why the switch to materials management? Materials management, I'm not gonna read this, it's in your briefing book, but in essence, it's the whole theory of cradle to grave that you hear about all the time, you don't just try to figure out, what are you gonna do with something, and how are you gonna recycle it at the end of life, you actually design it, you actually pay attention to how things are packaged, you run through the whole thing, or in essence, it doesn't become a product. Unfortunately, as you know, um, we get pushed at us an awful lot of materials that we really don't control, and so, in the, in the tenets for material management, you need to be looking at extraction, there's an impact there, right, whether it be trees, or minerals, or what have you, product design, product manufacturing, consumption and use, end-of-life management. Unfortunately, we only control the last two elements, so we can do a lot in terms of education, and we can do a lot in terms of, you know, um, well, we'll talk around SWAC, we'll say, well, maybe in the future, we'll recycle fewer products, but we'll do a lot better job, so there's a lot, lots of one-liners like that, that can actually result in a leaner demeanor system that gets us near our goal. And then finally, this last bullet, um, no secret to anybody, we didn't know the China ban was coming along when we started this plan, um, there is a, a section in there that talks about it, and we've hoped that we've addressed our reaction to it, um, through our recommendations on, and I'll be getting to that. So just very quickly, this is the outline for the plan itself, I'm not gonna read through all that, um, again, it forms the, the background, the data, the existing system, everything you needed to have in place to sort of support why you're making the recommendations you're making. Those recommendations ended up on top, implementing a county-wide organics program, um, consider instituting a county-wide visitor environmental fee, modernize and update the franchise agreements, and then implement a county-wide school district waste reduction and recycling program, utilizing Oregon Green Schools, and then number five, monitoring waste and recycling, the rest of them, six through ten, are things we're already doing, and we felt we needed to continue doing those, uh, perhaps embellish them a bit, um, where we might be able to. So taken in order, uh, the woody debris and food waste is the largest component by weight of our waste stream. Um, we've got the examples of, of Thompson Sanitary running a successful program in the Central Coast area, shows that thirty-one percent of their recovered material for twenty seventeen was woody debris or wood waste. This, all these recommendations don't mean that when this plan's adopted, boom, the next day, we're all of a sudden gonna be implementing these things, they simply point the way to the, the best options, the best recommendations that the SWAC, the county, the city should be thinking about, having completed this over a year-long, uh, process of discussion and devising these. Um, for the county as a whole, as much as seven to ten percent of the weight of all recovered materials, uh, could probably be easily, um, accomplished through, uh, a comprehensive organics program. Um, the second one, instituting a county-wide visitor environmental impact fee, and we had a lot of discussion on this one, and the concept here is, you guys will love this one, because it happens all the time, first, we probably ought to put together a group that actually looks at exactly how this works and what it means, but the general reasoning for having it is that we all know we've been very successful with tourism, and yet, for the most part, it's our rate payers, the rate base, that continues to pay for all of our solid waste and recycling infrastructure, for the most part. And so the concept here is to, um, potentially, down the road, levy some very minimal fee, um, that would take care of that, and again, the idea isn't necessarily to say, yea or nay, we're gonna do that, it's just that it's probably something we should look into. I would give the quick example that I hadn't been to Denver in about ten or fifteen years, I was at a conference there a year ago, and when I got my hotel bill, there was literally an entire page of fees. Now, taken as a snapshot, it's like, well, this is ridiculous, and yet, you started reading through them, and a lot of them made sense, for whatever's happening, you know, water conservation fee, whatever, you've all seen the, the ad probably of the little girl on the stand with her lemonade stand. Um, modernize and update the franchise agreements, um, in the plan, you'll see what some of the limitations are, um, at one point, this was, this was built from our, I should mention that our contractors that we worked with on this were Bell and Associates, they were pretty strong on the idea that it was just a, a given, needs to be done, you know, go for cities and county and do this. The SWAC talked about this one quite a bit, and where we ended up at, as basically maybe working through the county franchise system. working through the county franchise systems first, taking a look at maybe trying some modernizing there, and then, you know, some things come out of that that make sense, that it may be a model down the road that one or two or three cities may want to adopt. I think this one kind of stands on its own. Education, obviously, is going to be a huge piece of our success with recycling and waste management in the future. I am happy to report that we actually already acquired a grant from DEQ, and we have a pilot program going on two schools down in Newport. DEQ is fully aware that based on the success of that, they're expecting us to come back and request additional money for additional Lincoln County schools. And then finally, the monitoring white, waste recycling, no problem. I get monthly statistics on the trash that occurs, that's how the user fee is paid. On the other hand, there's only a process for reporting to DEQ once a year, and that report typically takes them several months before, after the fact, before we actually know what our final recovery rate is. It's a little bit difficult to be responding to the daily and weekly breaking situation of something like the China ban if you're only looking at what's happening once a year. So I highlight in this case, it gives me a great deal of pleasure, particularly here in Lincoln City, that one of the most valuable reports that I have as a person who's worked with numbers my entire career, North Lincoln Sanitary, as you know, actually produces a report. I'm sure they share it with you. It details every single month what's recycled, broken out by type, broken out by trash. I'm not saying that the SWAC needs to dig into every single little detail, but if we're going to continue down this road for the next several years of dealing with probably the most upsetting period of the apple cart for recycling, as DEQ said, in over fifty years, it is not going to be good enough to take a look at it once a year, nine months after the year is closed. So that's what this particular element is about. And then finally, the last six, the six through ten, basically are just elements that we already support. I probably would highlight the fact that number six, the first one, no secret that we probably need to do even more than we've been doing in the past to educate our citizens. Tina will be the first one to tell you that they've spent an enormous amount of effort, not that they're not always doing a great job, but an enormous effort trying to keep people aware of what all the changes that have been occurring as a result of the China ban. So I am going to end it here, and then I'd like to ask Tina French to come up. And I thought, my idea was, I'm happy to answer any questions, but it's really between the advice of your two advisors that serve on the SWAC, Tina French, who also, by the way, last year served as our vice president, and Judy Casper.
I missed a meeting, and you get voted in as chair. Have you missed a meeting?
Mark, if I could ask a question, and maybe either of you, when you talk about tourism and their use of the facilities, are you separating day use versus overnights?
Well, Tina's, I'm sure will want to answer this one too, because it was partly Tina's initial reaction to the concept of this fee that got us talking a lot more. And I think things like whether it's day use versus just overnight stay, the whole, I think that's the reason we kind of ended up, that there really needs to be a group that would really think hard and talk about what makes sense, just like you would develop any other sort of fee or tax on a system. The endpoint was the desire to figure out, does it make sense to be collecting a small amount because it is getting more and more and more and difficult to try to pay for all the things that we need to pay for in a really good solid waste management system? So the example I would give that's in the report, there were something like three million visitors to Newport last year. And, you know, if half of those were overnight stays and you charge them a dime or a quarter, that adds up to a lot of money really fast. But again, the idea is to take the time to examine whether this is a worthy thing to pursue or not, much like you would have, and under that description, I would describe trash and recycling as being more like another form of infrastructure. But on the flip side, of course, they also bring in an awful strong part of our economy. So that's really the part that has to be discussed.
Yeah. I hate to start out on a, can I follow up with that?
Yeah.
On a negative, because we've done a lot of great work on this plan, and this is the one point of the plan that I think Mark is alluding to that I do not approve of. And I'll tell you why, is because if you own a business and a tourist comes to your place of business and discards solid waste or recycling, you pay a rate for that, and you charge your, I mean, you do a great job of breaking down your sandwiches, you know, per, and so in my opinion, the visitors are already paying their fair share. And if they're staying at a hotel, they are paying for the garbage and recycling rates in their overnight rate. Adding another fee onto that, if you're looking for a tax, sure, I mean, people do it all the time. I just don't, I think that they're already paying their fair share for that. Now, I will say that our company, per capita, probably spends more money on education things for vacation rentals and so on and so forth than a community that doesn't have as many visitors as we do, because we try to educate our visitors on how to do it. So that is the one little line item that I can see might have some validity in collecting something from visitors to try to recover that. But I got to tell you, and if you don't have it already, you're going to get it in the next few days, and if you look at our rate review report, that line item doesn't make a hill of beans difference in the garbage rates. I mean, you're talking pennies. So other than that piece, I think that we did a lot of great work. And I mean, we did great work with that too, because there was lively discussion. And I have to say that I'm probably the lone duck at the table that really disagreed with this, and either they didn't speak up or they didn't disagree with it. But that, other than that, I think that the plan is a great plan.
Well, I would only follow up by saying Tina's position on this, I think, really is what caused the SWAC as a whole to agree to the idea that it's probably something that needs to be looked at. So in other words, not necessarily a dead idea, but there's so many different aspects of it, like Tina was uncovering. Is it, you're after the people that you normally don't get a fee from because they're only here for the day, or what is it? And so if it stays in there, that was the idea, is to actually have some people look into a little more detail, whether it made sense or not.
We don't have the authority as a solid waste advisory commission or the solid waste district to put a tax out there.
Right.
I mean, it would definitely be something way above our pay grades.
Right. So it'd be more just providing, if such a committee were to, if this recommendation stayed in, and if such a committee were formed, that would come in the form of additional, you know, this is what we discussed, this is what we found out, you know, could end up being a little white paper, a little report on the topic. No way, in shape or form, did it necessarily reflect that we should simply go out and do this, because as Tina said, she was one who was particularly good at describing some why you wouldn't want to do that.
Are you waiting for questions for us, or were you presenting?
Yeah, if anybody has any questions or comments, or?
I do, Mr. Mayor. I'm interested in the plastics to pellets idea that was in your briefing material. Do you have any ideas about implementing something like that? I do, but do you?
The, are you talking plastic to pellets?
Right, plastics to pellets, that was in your.
So that was in the plan. So our contractor laid out a lot of different things as options of things we could pursue. That's not necessarily one that we highlighted as an automatic, you know, that's, and part of the reason for that is, is the investment's rather large in order to have the equipment to do that. And I would use the lesser cousin of trying to do that styrofoam and compressing it, and you have to have a market for it. Doesn't mean that, given where we are right now with everything that's happened just since December, that, you know, some things that we can't even imagine today could develop. There's already rumors running around of potentially another paper mill reopening in the Northwest. We haven't had one of those.
Last one closed.
Just in March.
Yeah, and it was barely hanging on. So opportunities like that are part of what we kind of meant under that other recommendation, which is to monitor waste and recycling opportunities and then react to those accordingly.
I have good news, though, Diana. Well, it's related, but not quite as exciting as a pelletizer. But I will tell you that Taft High School wrote for a grant to recycle all of the three-D printer plastic. So it's a very similar type thing to what Chris put in the plan. So, and we received that grant. So we will be getting the machine to all of the kids' work that was not successful, and there's learning, so there's a lot of it. All of that plastic, instead of going in the garbage, gets melted down, sorted by color, and then made back into three-D plastic. So that's pretty exciting. And then all the plastic from the district is going to come to Taft, so the kids will get to learn how to do that, and so I'm really excited about that.
And I should have said too, in fairness, we do have an open invitation to borrow at any time the styrofoam densifier from Tillamook County, it's mobile. But that would fall into more of the category of what we used to call special events. So, you know, there's no reason that we couldn't talk about doing that. The trouble is, and this is where I'm sure not only Tina, but the other haulers, you have to have a place to collect enough clean styrofoam so that when this machine arrives, because you can imagine what it's doing, it's taking this huge volume that could fill a warehouse, compressing it all down into logs. And they barely do that successfully in Marion County. So, yeah, from that.
And is there still?
Standpoint, are we going to try that sometime? We probably will.
If I could follow up, Mr. Mayor, I'm still interested in plastics to pellets. You said it's rather expensive, and are there grants available for that? And I have ideas about this, so I'd like to.
There could be. So for instance, if there were a market that we are able to find, then yes, DEQ would entertain us writing a grant to help us investigate the equipment and things that it might take to do that. So that's a definite positive. And again, you know, experimenting with it with styrofoam only, that could be a way of sort of looking at it, but obviously, you'd want to go more large scale for it to really make a lot of difference.
Right, we need jobs around here. I have an idea. If I could finish, Tina, do you see any potential for more local plastics to pellet industry?
Oh, that's a tough one. Currently, when, everybody's really gun-shy right now, because, I mean, we're paying over two hundred dollars a ton to get rid of recycling. The market is terrible. And so to put any capital outlay out there in honestly, any recycled commodity other than cardboard, glass, tin, and aluminum that have local markets, and those markets have historically been steady comparatively to container, the container market. If you were to ask me right now, I would say absolutely not. If you were to ask me two years ago, I'd be like, yeah, let's look at it. You know, everything was hunky-dory two years ago, and we thought we had these great markets. Well, what we had is a great shipping company that was shipping what we thought we were recycling to China, and they were throwing it away. But we got to feel really good that we were recycling, you know, one through seven plastics. Well, in all honesty, ones and twos were getting recycled, maybe sometimes fives, maybe sometimes threes, and the rest of it, we're finding out, was never getting recycled, period. So I'm really gun-shy to move into anything that I don't know exactly what's happening to it and where it's going. And I have to tell you, I mean, we're shipping to India and Vietnam right now. Well, what are they doing with it? And so that's a concern. And so I really like the idea of a composting and yard debris program because it goes to Corvallis. I know Corvallis, I can stop by there anytime and make sure that our stuff is being treated as it's supposed to be treated. It's expensive, but it's a local program that we have some control over. We have zero control over what recycle markets do, zero. We have zero control as a city. I mean, it's not just little North Lincoln Sanitary, but even as a city, we don't have a control over, once they're shipped to the processors where they're marketed, we have zero control over that. And I don't like that.
Okay, thanks.
Quick question, if I might. Incineration, is that completely off the table for anything anymore?
Well, there's an incinerator in Marion County, Covanta, and it is extremely expensive, and it does produce energy, but I am not sure it's a net gain, if that makes sense.
Would a, we have a burn ban here, but I think in the county of seasons still, if I remember right. Would that have an effect on your woody waste if we opened that up and allowed burn ban, or burning?
Well, DEQ is not going to count that as recovery. And so, yeah, it'd get rid of the wood, but it also brings along with it, you know, additional environmental factors of basically uncontrolled burning in a burn barrel versus a facility like GP Mill that's designed to burn it cleaner. So, I mean, it helps get rid of the debris, but it doesn't help our bottom line of doing the responsible environmental best job with that debris, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
And I would disagree with that interpretation, but.
So, I mean, we have the wood waste recovery program at the transfer station at a reduced rate, you know, is, I don't have an answer to that. I do think that we could do a much better job in the city with composting, with backyard composting. And Judy just got one the other day from the office, and Mark is bringing us more, and we're actually going to hit that pretty hard because it's compost season. People are mowing their yards and they're weeding. And because I would really like to, and we're going to, I don't know where Mr. Chandler went, but we're going to talk about a committee that the city has formed about reducing and reusing, and that's one of the things, or what are things that we can do that maybe don't count, you know, in the numbers. But I'm okay with chasing some numbers, but in the whole picture, if we're trying to reduce solid waste, then let's reduce solid waste. Who cares about the numbers? I mean, I don't want to say that too loud, but here I am in a public meeting saying it.
It doesn't make sense if you're just chasing a number for number's sake when you really, the overall goal is to reduce it, but not worry about if someone recognizes it, it's just, there's less there.
And I will say, I didn't mean to sound like it would be a dumb idea to burn woody debris. Obviously, we all know what happens if we don't have mechanisms for moving materials as they, you know, they'll overwhelm us. So I'm just saying from the.
And that's why we have the voucher system in Lincoln City for, because of the burn ban. So we have a once-a-month voucher for every resident that has garbage service, they get to take a load up to the transfer station of woody debris to help alleviate that burden.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
If I could, just changing temperature, I guess. I found the plan very helpful, very historic, and that was nice to have as a baseline. I don't know that I agree with the recommendations or want to have anything to do with them. What instead I would like is, one, you know, that long list of options, things that we could do. Because what I'm hung up on, quite frankly, is I'm not sure why we have a county solid waste district to begin with. Our franchises are municipalities, we've got three good operation in the county, and we run under franchises. And I, quite frankly, in my time, have found very little input from the district regarding city franchise or anything else. And maybe we're spoiled, because Tina, as you've already mentioned, Mark, has kept us well-informed and certainly a cheerleader to this whole movement. So, you know, my answer, you know, if we're continuing. a cheerleader to this whole movement. So, you know, my answer, you know, if we're continuing to give the city, I like the different entities getting together, producing options, and obviously, we pay a consultant to provide us with that. Let the cities or franchisees go through them and pick what they want to do on an ongoing basis. Because we're the ones that are going to either charge our citizenry or not. And I guess if, for some reason, we're looking for money, you know, we've got a tonnage fee that each of our haulers pay to the county. That produces, according to the report, some $340,000. That could be used for and in lieu of a tax, another tax, for some kind of joint effort or whatever. But I guess I don't know where to go as far as recommendation. They're all great ideas. I guess I'm not ready to support new ones because I don't know enough about them yet. But I'm sure a big advocate for learning more about it and having this, in our case, the council decide which ones they want to put forth and move.
So, I guess the way I would answer that is imagine that although I do serve as the program manager, when SWAC is convened, I'm basically their staff. And although we did engage a contractor to a large degree to pull together all the history and a lot of the stuff that you found useful, although even then, you know, it's like we were providing the numbers, the best way to look at it is that the recommendations actually came out as a result of your experts, people like Tina and the waste haulers from the other companies, and each of the city representatives and the county having a chance to sit down once a month and really talk through what makes sense. It's not that that can't get done at an individual city level. It's just that they did the same thing when we finally accomplished revising the debris management plan. It needed to be revised for years and years and years. And then, finally, when the SWAC took it on, again, it took about a year. It got everybody together once a month, and we actually worked through all the process, not always agreeing, as we know which element that is. But on the other ones, those top recommendations were pretty much across the board, looking at how best we can move forward.
And, Mr. Mayor, I don't disagree with you, Mark. I'm just saying there are options. And I'm not a big fan of government oversight. I think there's too much of that anyway. And I think we could have done the same thing, or, you know, again, you've got three in our county anyway, three folks, haulers that talk to each other. Maybe they didn't, but I can remember the day when you didn't have the council that you have today. So, you know, and I applaud Judy for spending time and Tina, but that's relatively recent that you've had that kind of quality and interest. And I think for, is it $4 a ton? You know, there's money sitting there that we have other options to do. But that's okay. We can differ.
Well, I guess the only other, because it's public news and I'm happy to report it, is, you know, even though we are basically making more money now because trash is up, so there's more receipts, you will see that reflected in the growing, you know, reserve that the solid waste district has. And that's a good thing because then, as you said, Dick, when something special comes up, you know, potentially, there could be some money to help do that. At the start of the recession, when everything tanked about $90,000, well, you know, it's taken a while to build that back up. So, I do recognize that there, you know, there are avenues beyond of that. And I think we talked enough about the concept of whether, you know, tourists paying up or not. But I'll just leave it at that.
Please.
At the top of page 19 on your report, it says that Lincoln City is the only jurisdiction in the county that stipulates residential, commercial, and institutional generators must arrange for refuse collection service with the franchise service provider. It's my understanding that some waivers have been given. So, even though...
To the best of my knowledge, the mandatory garbage ordinance has not been enforced for over 10 years, maybe longer. When it was being enforced, you could go to the city and request a waiver and produce some reasons. And there was, I think maybe there's three or four reasons. Richard, have you looked at that recently? Anyhow, and they used to give those out periodically. To my knowledge, there's been nothing done with that for at least 10 years.
I'm wondering if it's legitimate to include that in the report if it's not being enforced.
Well...
It's still an ordinance, though. So, it either needs to be removed or revised or...
And that would have, the way that would have happened is our contractor caught that, captured it, as he should. And then, the haulers actually passed through the entire plan once. And so, I think I would agree with Tina. It's like, well, yeah, it's not enforced, but it is still a law, you know, so...
I guess we need to address that internal event. On the top of page 21, I'm unclear. It says Lincoln County has tried to establish a household hazardous waste collection facilities. So, is it facilities or is it a facility?
Well, we tried to... I'll answer this, sorry. We actually applied for grants to have a hazardous waste cabinet, meaning it's fireproof, explosion proof, at each of the transfer stations. And so, there would have been one located in the Walport-Tolito area, one in the Newport area, and one here. Our grant was denied.
Okay, so it's multiple, so the A should come out. Let's see.
Wait, I... Did we give an either/or in that grant? I know it was before your time.
Well, I think part of why that happened was when we were, we knew we were down to the wire, to be honest about it, competing with the last money DEQ had, and we knew Coos Bay was going for it too. So, we also had talked about, well, maybe we could at least get one centralized facility and not do the cabinets. But it ended up not mattering. So, that's part of why, as Tina described, the main desire was to try to establish that. And I think in our report, as you see, we continue to support having the event because it's not economical this time to think about a cabinet.
And I will always advocate that we should have things before other cities in the county. I'm not about centralized, that our citizens have to drive 45 minutes to deliver something.
And that's one of my points later on I wanted to make was, I appreciate the household hazardous waste events, but they're not very convenient when they're in yahats in Walport and even Newport. So, we'd like them up here, too.
I know that.
I like once a year.
So, the quick history to that one is, you know, I've been around long enough now that I'm not even sure the haulers remember what they told me. When I came along, it's like, "Well, we have this rotating every four cities system, Lincoln City, Newport, Toledo, Walport." So, I'm religiously following this thing. And then, this one year comes up, and I go, "Well, it's time to have it in Toledo," according to the rule. And everyone goes like, "Well, what's rule? What rule?" We just had a discussion, and we decided we'd like to have it in Lincoln City again. Point being that as soon as you have it in any other city, then the rest of the cities are going to say, "It's not in their city enough."
Once every four years really isn't often enough. Beginning on page 21, you quote a letter, and it's hard to tell where that letter ends. So, there should be something to indicate where we go from letter to narrative again. It's hard to compare our refuse amounts because there's such an influx of other people who contribute to our garbage. I'm wondering if there's some sort of comparison we can do by account rather than resident?
So, we divide everything by commercial and residential, and then I can break it down to the size of receptacle and the frequency of the receptacle? Is that what you're...
Maybe that's it, yeah. I'm just...
What are you looking for specifically?
Well, just when you're comparing populations, it doesn't equate because population's curious.
In terms of how well it do, you mean?
Or tonnages, total tonnages? What are you comparing?
Comparing us to other cities or counties or...
With regards to, like, tons disposed, tons recovered?
Yeah, both, both.
By resident.
I guess those would be percentages, but are they percentages based on population? Are they percentages based on users?
So, we take the entire amount of tonnage that we haul to the landfill, and then we take the entire tonnage that we haul to the recycling processor. And then, you divide those, and that's how you get your recovery rate.
So, I think the one you're getting at is, and you'll remember this, Tina, because we talked about this quite a bit, is the recycled and the waste per capita. So...
Like pounds per person?
So, yeah, so it gets divided, and then the county ends up looking like it doesn't do as good, say, as Portland.
Right. It's on page 23.
Right. And so, the unfairness there is, and to shoot the county over the bender is like this, too. And so, that's why that's written up in there, is to be aware of that factor.
Yeah.
Now, we don't have specific numbers we can use, but I did do a little desktop exercise where I said, "Okay, let's assume that really the population of Lincoln County is 10% greater, 20% greater, or 30% greater than, you know, what we'd have without the tourism." And in fact, if you do that, it doesn't make up all the difference, but the waste per capita and recovered per capita start making a lot more sense.
Yeah, okay.
So...
I was glad that that was in there to make the reader aware that our population doesn't represent...
Well, and we have really good data on residential cans. So, I know what the average 32-gallon roll cart weighs. I know what the average 64-gallon roll cart weighs, and I know what the average 96-gallon roll cart weighs. So, if you just look at residential, then we could do some pretty good comparisons. We have great info from the DEQ. Portland State University does a waste audit every year where they do the same thing in different areas, inside a metro, outside a metro. So, we know if our population, if our 32-gallon roll cart is weighing 45 pounds and the state average is 27 pounds, and I'm pulling those numbers out of the air. Don't take... Then we know, like, oh, wow, we've got a lot. And then, I think that Mark hit on it, that, you know, you pull compost, food and compost out of a garbage can, it's going to weigh a lot less. It's 40% by volume of weight.
Right. Okay. And vacation rentals would be treated as residential?
Yeah. If they have a roll cart. If they have a... Some vacation rentals are so large they have like a one-yard container or one and a half yard. Then they bump into the commercial.
Okay, okay. The only other comment I had was about the environmental impact fee, and if we add a charge to lodging, then we're not capturing any refuse from day trippers.
Right, right. And again, you know, the split between the SWAC, as Tina's already described, was, you know, maybe it has some legs, maybe it should be looked at, but we don't know the detail.
So, I have a few typos. Should I give them to you, Mark?
Yeah, just forward those to me. And I apologize. You guys are number one. Like I said, we are, as Tina knows, we were supposed to have all this being done by our contractor attending to all that stuff. But we're no longer using their services. I won't get into any details. So, we're quickly finishing everything up we can and getting each version out there for the deadline mine. But as I said earlier, just because you've agreed with this or that in the plan, doesn't mean you've signed off on the typos or, you know, maybe a few sentences that should have been inserted here or there. So, yes, please, anything you would like to share, just send that to me directly. I appreciate that very much.
I gave them to Judy. She'll send them to you.
Awesome.
Quick question. It's a big question, so you don't have to answer it tonight.
Okay. I'll write it down.
The economic impact of a landfill on a county, for a county, to a county, the jobs it creates. I'd love to hear about that.
Okay. I will send you. I have really good information. It's fairly lucrative to have a landfill in your backyard, but then there's downfalls to it, too. But every ton that comes in from out of county has a surcharge on it. So, Benton County has quite a large fund.
Like money.
But yeah, I can send you those numbers because I have them for both Riverbend and Coffin Butte landfill.
Because it wasn't such a big question. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes.
Okay, please.
Thanks for your presentation. You know, I read, you know, San Francisco has a mandatory composting recycling thing.
I was just there last week.
The city of 860,000 people has a mandatory composting and recycling thing. And what's the opportunity for a city of 8,000 to do that? And yes, I know you offer recycling, composting devices. Not everyone has that. I think they have to be on dirt, right? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they have to be on dirt. I don't know.
You know, that's a great question.
I think they have to be on dirt.
Regardless, not everybody's going to use them. I think...
Right. Not everyone has the time. Not everyone can do it.
Well, and some people don't create that much in their homes.
Sure. So, you know, is there, like San Francisco, an opportunity for your company to facilitate something like that, to have curbside composting?
Absolutely.
Do you go through the trash after it's been collected to, for your own benefit, maximize your recycling as far as tin, cardboard? So, just so everybody knows, if you throw it away in the garbage, it's not going to be gone through again, right?
No. Heavens, no.
So...
It is extremely unsafe, A, and just not feasible.
So, for those watching, they're not going to pick it out if it's tin, cardboard, or things that are highly profitable for you. It's not going to be...
I wish they were highly profitable, but yeah.
Well, more than one and two plastics.
Sure, gotcha.
And, you know, how would you know that containers at curbside weigh a certain amount? Do you...
Oh, we weigh them.
At the truck, it's weighed?
Yes. So, what we do is, once a quarter, we do a row audit, and we go and pick up 132-gallon roll carts, and we weigh those. And then, we get rid of it. Go out and weigh 164-gallon roll carts. And we do the same thing for every size vessel we have up through six-yard containers.
Okay. So, one thing I should probably highlight is...
And by a municipality. So, we know what Lincoln City weighs versus Lincoln County versus Depot Bay.
That, an observation I should probably share with you, and Tina certainly is the person who has to implement this, both Newport and Lincoln City had to add the, in order to continue with the same program that we've had with DEQ, had to add a contamination education element. And so, my point is, is that both have submitted and had plans approved, signed off by the county and by your city, where basically material is being looked at even more closely to sort of help people understand what they're throwing in their trash, they shouldn't be putting in there. So, I mean, whether there was somebody going through to collect the valuable stuff or not, hopefully, it ends up resulting in a little less stuff that could be recovered, not being wasted.
And Riley, I want to follow up with your very first part of your question, just so you understand that these programs are your programs, and we are the mechanism that makes them happen. But I don't decide if we do a compost program or not. You do. And I don't decide whether we pick up curbside recycling. You do. And so, we are, we're the rubber meets the road, and we implement it. But those are your programs, and whatever you guys decide, we do.
Well, right. If you're doing 40% by volume, organic material that could be...
Sure. And that is definitely, I will tell you, it's the low-hanging fruit when it comes to recovery, but it comes with a cost. And that's where my job is, is to present you of, here's the program, and here's how much it costs, and then you guys get to decide.
If we're concerned with woody debris not being used effectively as hog fuel, and we're talking about a 40% volume reduction, I mean, you put those together, and that's composting. I mean, you put those together and that's composting.
The other interesting thing about, talking about waste of when you throw it in your garbage, you know, we don't go through it. We do periodically do waste audits. To find out what we're missing. So do we need to do a better job of educating at cardboard? Do we need to do a better job of educating at, you know, what? Do we have hazardous waste in the garbage that shouldn't be in there? You know, so we do, um, I mean, it's pretty, um, scientific.
I mean, sure, thank you.
Tina, would you mind continuing with that advertisement? Because I love the one on the recycling, the wishers.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Quit wishful recycling.
Given this, because what I'm afraid now is somebody will not be throwing it in the trash.
Sure.
And throw it in the recycling.
Yeah, we definitely don't want to, to contaminate our recycling because we're nervous that maybe it should have been recycled. But I, I see what you're saying too, we also don't want people, because I've heard that, I've heard everything.
I know people do that.
Under the sun, but I've heard, oh, they pick it out, and it's like, no, if you put it in your garbage roll cart, it never gets looked at again. That's why I tell people, quit shredding so much stuff, nobody looks through the garbage to pull your power bill out. By the way, shredding is garbage, so don't shred what you don't need to.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm. What happens when you throw woody debris in a hole? It, in the landfill, when you throw the food into the hole that is the landfill, what happens to it?
Well.
Is it decomposed?
It breaks down eventually, it does break down slower than if you compost it because it obviously doesn't get the oxygen it needs and so on and so forth.
Are we just trying to conserve landfill space?
That's one of the things.
Yeah.
Hey, I'm just too simplistic on this.
Yeah, and land.
It, it's a, I mean, it's a, it's.
Well, but it is, it's, you dig out a hole somewhere, but you throw it.
We actually build mountains now.
Yeah, there's holes, whatever. But my point is, I just don't understand the whole, I, I'm, I'm just, maybe I'm too dang old.
Well, I think you, I.
I don't see, I don't bow to this religion of.
I think you actually started down a good road by saying, as part of it, removing that volume from the landfill. Because over time, landfill space is going to get more and more expensive. You know, so maybe not in our lifetime, but, you know, Coffin Butte fills up, Lincoln County's still here. How far away is the next landfill going to be and how much is it going to cost us to get our trash there? I mean, really, in a lot of ways, we're pretty fortunate to have Coffin Butte and also we're.
Riverbend.
In essence, right over the hill. You know, you have places like.
Our next stop is Arlington, Oregon, just for.
How far away is that?
Yeah, and I.
That's a long ways.
My age, when I grew up, they were holes in the ground.
Yeah.
I understand now they're not.
Sure.
Well, and to be honest.
And then we lit them on fire so that it decreased the volume. I remember those days, that's how old I am.
Now they're nice golf courses.
To be honest, I don't know why I get so excited about composting, because one of the jobs I had growing up was basically rotating our huge three bin composters. I hated that. So it's like, why am I doing it now? I mean, these were twenty by twenty, you know, but in essence, they were nothing more than a hole in the ground that gets rotated a couple times a year.
That's my brand. All right, anyone else? Thank you very, very much.
Thanks, great questions.
Super informative.
Judy probably has, you have to have something, Judy.
Well, I've learned a lot. Um, did you need to have a, some kind of a consensus, uh, agreement for?
Yeah, I mean, as much as you care to do.
Gets a pretty good idea.
Or embellish, or remove, or what, I mean, that's kind of why I set this up, or I hoped that we could set it up so that you get the information and then whatever feedback the council would like to provide, we would appreciate that moving forward. Because for me, as a county staffer, ultimately, the board of commissioners, uh, commissioners are going to be saying, okay, what'd the cities have to say about this plan? And that'll be part of their decision.
And the SWAC will present this to the county commissioners, and we only provide them recommendations. We, we don't approve or disapprove of anything, we take them, our work, and say, here you go. You like it, you don't like it.
So, Mr. Mayor, are you going to ask us for a consensus of accepting this?
We need a motion for that, I guess, or if we're just going to, okay, so it's the consensus to accept? And I, I'm just confused where I'm going to go with this. So, uh, council accepts this presentation and recommendations?
Yeah. And if you have, if you want to compile like a white sheet to send back to the solid waste advisory, I would hope that all the cities in the county would do the same thing so that as a solid waste advisory committee, we could say, okay, here's the stuff, because this is still a working document. So it's not done. It has to be done by June thirty?
Yeah.
Who says, who says it has to be done?
The.
The DEQ extended their funding.
Because this is operating off of a grant.
That was my next question, how much is it compulsory, and you don't, you have no options to do these things.
Right, so, so I guess the other thing would, uh, keep in mind that their recommendations, they say, yeah, we agree that these are the best things we should be looking into, given our current situation in materials management. Doesn't mean that as your SWAC continues to look into them, that they won't be coming back with additional reports. You know, saying, hey, you know, it turns out that PRC has gotten a permit from DEQ to expand the acreage they have. All of a sudden, you know, composting woody debris and food waste makes a lot more sense, those sorts of things.
Well, and as landfill rates rise, that gives you more room to play with the finances of accessory programs. Because then every ton that you don't send to the landfill, you're saving that tip fee. So, um, as those two start to weigh out a little bit more, then, then those programs become much more financially feasible for, for ratepayers.
And one thing I did want to mention, and we haven't brought it up in this plan, is, I think, first year after I was elected, I was attending the, the SWAC meetings and we were discussing the emergency management.
Right.
Program at that time. And we haven't really talked about that, but it's, it's, it, it was fascinating to think about what happens in a natural disaster.
Oh, goodness.
How we clear roads and what we do with that, and whether we suspend certain rules and regulations. And, uh, so I wanted to say thank you for doing that.
You say fascinating, I say terrifying. Overwhelming.
Yeah, and that's actually, um, Tina will be the first to hear this. Uh, bullet number ten, that got added after the SWAC meeting. Because we sort of said, well, all the things we're sort of currently doing, that's why you'll see that last one that says to, you know, continue to work on the debris management plan as appropriate.
Yay.
And the short version of that is, there's a whole mountain of complicated FEMA forms and everything else that we don't even want to get into, that literally the state of Oregon's still dealing with it. We're partners with, uh, a new region one debris plan, they're still dealing with it. So that's what that bullet was about, is continuing to look at that debris management aspect and move forward with better and better preparedness as we can.
Well, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
DEQ, good job.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
I need to leave my children, I just got to note that they are sick, so I have to be.
I'll be leaving, thank you.
Your Honor, can I clarify, that was unanimous consent?
I think I saw everyone's head nod, I, I didn't, but, does it matter? Does, what, what happens if it's not?
If it's not unanimous consent, then you ought to vote on it as a motion, so.
Uh, yeah, my head nodded. Since it's just ongoing, I'm good.
And if I could add, um, there was also a request that the city send a letter in support of the plan.
They'll, they'll take our, our recommendation from here to, to the commissioners.
But she did say that they want a.
White sheet?
Will our representative on the committee provide that?
Susan, I did it.
Will you provide that?
What is it I'm providing them?
Recommendation?
Consensus?
Oh, sure, that's what we agreed to.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that good enough?
All right. Uh, it's solid waste trash, uh, trash education campaign.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Um, in our audience, we have Nikki Price, who is, uh, waiting for item number fifteen in case it is needed. That is an item that the staff has recommended that we continue or table. There was some miscommunication on my part with the staff members on whether or not that should have been on the agenda. But we weren't certain if you would have any questions. We have two more presentations before that item comes up. If, if you're agreeable to table that, it might be nice that if Mrs. Price would like to stay, she can, but if she doesn't want to, she doesn't have to.
So you're asking for a motion to table it?
It would be just to table it to the May fourteenth meeting.
And that works for you, Nikki, okay?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, opposed, hearing none, motion carries, thank you. Thank you for that, Nikki, appreciate it. Okay, so are we back to trash education campaign?
We are.
Okay.
Did we table that to the next meeting?
Yes.
May fourteenth?
I thought I talked into my microphone.
If you thought that talking about sewage was fun, wait till you start getting into trash. Whatever we dispose of is a fascinating topic. Do you want me to begin? Maybe you want me to make it in there?
I see what's sitting here. Should we go ahead or shall we wait?
Okay. So, um, as you know, there has been a great deal of discussion on recycling. And, um, several months ago, we had some children from our elementary school who came and requested that we consider a, a plastic bag ban. That led to further discussion after the changes in the recycling market to talk a little bit about, to look more into just the general trash flow through the city and not just limit it to a plastic, plastic ban discussion. Uh, so over the last few months, um, we have held a couple meetings with, uh, some interested parties, uh, some businessmen, businessmen and women, uh, interested residents, environmentalists, uh, and, uh, others to take a look at our trash flow, to look at how do we approach this assignment we have. Uh, we took a visit out to the Coffin Butte landfill to discuss a little bit more with them. Uh, and then the staff has spent quite a bit of time doing a little bit of research, uh, quite a bit of research and, and trying to come up with something to present to you this evening. Uh, we actually wanted to talk a little bit about the neglected Rs. If you remember, um, when you talk about trash flow, it's a triangle. And it's reduce, reuse, and recycle. Um, and it's in that order. However, we have, as a, as a society, have focused on the recycling more than we have on the reducing and reusing. And it's the reducing and the reusing that we wanted to talk a little bit, uh, as we, uh, as, as we discuss what we've learned in this. The history of our country as it pertains to trash is a very fascinating one, especially since about nineteen fifty. So I'm going to give you a little bit of a history lesson, and it's really, really interesting. Let's see. We have become a throwaway society. Now, you would think that that just basically took place, but what we learned is that it was actually, uh, something that was, um, promoted. It was something that was campaigned on, it was something that we launched, uh, especially during the fifties and the sixties, and then beginning in the nineteen seventies, we started figuring out, now that we've created a throwaway society, what do we do with all the trash we're throwing away? Okay, so just to give you an idea of some of the things that took place that actually promoted this throwaway society, these are a little difficult to read, and I'm not going to go through them all. We've had a great influx for single-use items. For me, the best example of that is pudding. When I was a kid, you got pudding in a box that you mixed up in a bowl, now you get the individual. It's also in the way we take our lunches to school. You know, you used to have a, a lunchbox, and it had a sandwich in a cellophane wrapper. Now it's got, now it's a, a bag with a whole bunch of other stuff that's associated with it. Uh, we became a consumption of gadgets, and food rose drastically, drastically. In nineteen fifty-three, President Eisenhower's Council on Economic Advisers announced that America's economy ultimate, America's, American economy's ultimate purpose is to produce more consumer goods. In nineteen fifty-three, the first TV dinner was introduced. Multiple campaigns in the fifties and sixties introduced, um, to get people to consume more goods. Plastic sandwich bags were introduced in nineteen fifty-seven. Uh, Big introduces the first throwaway pen in nineteen fifty-nine. Um, in nineteen sixty, disposable razors are sold. By the way, for those that are old enough to remember the single blade that you unscrewed, those things cost about twenty dollars a pop now, and they're very hard to find the blades. I was rather surprised by that, I was going to bring one for show and tell and decided that a twenty dollar purchase for a single-blade razor was not a good investment. I got a bag of them if you want me to bring one. I actually went to all of the antique stores to see if I could find, remember the old razor brushes and everything? You can't find those very much either. Anyways, nineteen sixty, bread is sold in, uh, polyethylene bags rather than wrapped in paper like it was done before. And so, we saw these things continue to a disposable society until we hit the seventies. And, uh, and then we started asking ourselves, what do we do with all the trash that we're generating? So a couple of things that were significant that happened, nineteen seventy, Earth Day was created, okay? Um, and it was also that same time that the three Rs emerged, reduce, reuse, and recycle. The order of those, I think, is significant and it's important. Because our focus as a society, and I can tell you in my career, has been all recycle. It has not been on reducing and it has not been on reusing. Uh, it was in nineteen ninety-one that I first started a recycling program in a can, in a city that I worked in. And we bought a trailer, we gave those little green bins to the businesses, we went around and we separated their stuff into the bins and, and it went from there. And, and then you had state legislatures like Maryland and others that were mandating a twenty-five percent reduction in trash. And the way we looked at that was recycling. So, that kind of leaves us where we are now, where we have had a focus in recycling. And one thing that I really liked about, uh, Tina French's comments is that recycling market is not a market we can control. Uh, when I started again in nineteen ninety-one, everything was recyclable. And now, I have a tough time figuring out what is recyclable and what is not. And it seems to be changing, and then, of course, we have other countries that have changed the market drastically. So we want to talk a little bit about, uh, our proposal as a staff, um, to, to you. And I'm going to skip one thing, slide for, is what we can do, and that is to educate, educate, educate. But not necessarily on recycling, but on reducing trash and reusing trash. This is a really difficult concept because our, our whole society has become throwaway. And it would require a lot of personal changes. And, um, we could try, one of the things that we discussed about was legislation to try to enforce that, such as plastic bag bans and other things. And, uh, and the group that I worked with felt that perhaps a better way to begin this or to work on this is through an education campaign rather than simply banning bags or something. Although I did find, um, the reaction of the group that I talked with and the several businesses that I visited with was more positive than I thought, but the education was the idea that rose to the top. So, just a few ideas that we felt. Now, first of all, when I talk about an education campaign for the city, I'm not talking about in a very, I'm not talking about a large, expensive campaign. I'm talking about more of things that can be done on a, on a, either a no budget or a tight budget or a community-supported type of activities, and that's what we're going to go through a little bit now. So some of the things that we can talk about, or we can look at in promoting when you, uh, to reduce is to be smart and shop smart, okay? Uh, asking yourself simple question of, do I really need this? Questions such as using cloth bags rather than, um, plastic bags. The most interesting question I found through this whole discussion was that we have some of our stores that, uh, give an incentive for, uh, using a cloth bag or, or reusing a plastic bag. And the most. And the most interesting question that I had was, is it a greater incentive if they're going to charge you for a bag? Or is it a greater incentive, a dime? Or is it a greater incentive they're going to give you a dime off for the bag? And it was pretty much split. I'm one of those, that it was more of incentive that they were going to charge me. Others was more of incentive they were going to save a few, a dime or so. So, that was a rather interesting one. One of the things that we can do as we look at reducing is, is kind of come into the 21st century and embrace it a little bit and go e-billing, instead of getting all of the paper mailings that you're getting. It's, or the paper bills that you get. Now, I do find for some people that that's an emotional thing, and it's a security thing and an uncertainty of it, but that is one thing that we can do to reduce the amount of trash, is to get our bills through emails, rather than, or, or the automatic withdrawal if, if you're so inclined. Other things that we looked at is the, invest in reusable glass containers. Of course, water is a big one, plastic bottles. This is one thing that the city produces, and we produce well. If you buy a plastic bottle, keep it, use it, reuse it. Don't just throw it into the recycling bin. Reduce what, what it is that you're actually, what you're actually producing. Some other ones that were interesting, the discussions that came up, there's a thing that says, "I can reduce my trash by," on Google, or "How to Reuse Your Trash" on Google. And one of those things, which was rather interesting, I found is that if you bring your lunch to work, bring a spoon, a metal spoon, don't bring a plastic spoon. So, there's all sorts of little things, and part of what we are proposing, if you're so inclined to go forward with a project, is to get these kind of hints and out, and just to bring that customer awareness to our residents and those who visit it. Reusing is simple, be creative. Okay? There is a thousand and one things, a million and one things when you look at it. I mentioned the reusable water bottles, reusable glass jars, buying, donating unwanted items, cloth napkins instead of paper napkins, Google searches of how can I reuse? And so, what we're really looking at is, is to, if you're so inclined, is to create a campaign where we're trying to get consumer ideas out on how to reduce and reuse. Some of the ideas that we had to look at facilitating change that came up during our discussions, one, this has been very successful, we use this for planning, it can also be done whenever we have activities of having education, similar to what we did with our planning documents. And when we have the Fourth of July, and we can have a little display on to help educate people as to, as to how to reduce and reuse solid waste. This one had a lot of interest in the groups that we met with. It's a repair fair and share, we're learning a little bit more about that. It's basically, if something is broken, bring it to a fair that you have where there are people who can help repair it, rather than just dispose of it. One of my, one of the most interesting things that I've attended since I was here was an economic development conference in Florence. And they highlighted a business that fixes convertibles, upper-end convertibles, we're talking Rolls-Royce types of convertibles with the hydraulics for their, for their vehicles, that nobody fixes them, so they repair them, or so they throw them away. These guys started repairing them, their business is booming. I found that to be an interesting thing, and it's that concept of a repair fair and share type of thing. Of course, there's composting, which we've discussed a little bit. There is the composting on a big level, which is something we do as a community, or of course, there is composting on a small level. This picture was provided by Counselor Casper to me on one of our home composting. These are sold at cost by the North Lincoln Sanitary Service. And so, anyway, so, and then, of course, there are things that over time can be more expensive, public water refill stations. You see a lot of drinking fountains now that have, that have the bottle filler, things like that. So, anyway, so, what we're just bringing to you tonight is to just find out, are we on the right track? It's not something that, at this point, we're prepared to say we want to make a significant investment in, we want to use the social media that we have, we want to use the council's newsletters, we want to use those things where we already have costs that are associated with them, and then just build it from there. I do know there are also opportunities where we may be able to get some help in funding through grants if we want to go on a larger scale. So, that's our report. Yeah. I am completely for education. I like that aspect, and I try to live a lifestyle that is, use, I cook my own foods and try not to prepackage things. I think there's an economic strata that will use more processed foods, and, and the, be able to reach that population may not come through what you're proposing. And I don't want to be too general.
That's fine.
But that would be more at a, I think, more at a store level. And then I would talk about, it's funny, when you're talking about that repair-it-here fair, and I seem to recall, we used to call that shop, where we would teach children how to repair things. And I don't know if we can have the school district involved in this discussion about a way to, if it's that important, you know, teach the young men and women how to fix a table, how to repair a car, how to work metal and electrical, so that becomes part of our society again. Beyond that, yeah, I mean, just, it never hurts to have information, and I like the idea of that more than penalties.
Mr. Mayor, I would agree. I like the idea of education, and I think you're on the right track before we go to some kind of bans or penalties or negatives. I guess the thing I think of is a city budget line item, but also a responsibility area whom and, you know, but I, you know, as you were talking, I could see, you know, an item in, you know, the newsletter that we've started and, you know, utility bills that go out, that stuff can still be electronic and a little message. And I think the more we remind people, again, on a personal note, I know Family Promise, you know, even teaches classes to their clientele about food preparation, again, to get people away from, you know, buying, you know, the individual items and how, you know, actually cooking your Jell-O and pudding.
Yeah, and the economic reality of, say, a block of cheese versus a sliced cheese, and it seems like it's working cheaper at that end, but it's not. And again, it's that, I think there's that certain economic strata that just doesn't get that message.
So, I think, I would certainly promote an ongoing try and see how it, you know, it may build. Again, I, your repair fair, I actually like. Recently, I came back from Arizona, and I had the occasion to stop in at a shoe cobbler's place in, you know, Tucson. And I asked the old gentleman, and whenever I use that word, it means they're older than I am, I asked him who his apprentice was, and he didn't have any. And it was disappointing, he was actually disappointed, you know, that nobody's taking up the trade anymore. So, it should be nice to see some of those techniques, whether it's a clock repair or shoe cobbler or stuff, so. I applaud your effort.
Yeah, I think, and that's, I think it's back to the schools, in that there's this push for college versus, you know, not everyone has to go there. We need tradespeople too, and it's, it's an honorable profession. Please.
I'd like to make a comment about my food composter. I've been threatening for years, well, I finally got off my butt and did it. And I have to say that my kitchen smells fresh, like air, instead of compost, because that's now outside, which my dog sniffs around, but comes in with a smile. But it, it doesn't have any kind of aromatic, yeah, giving it off in the backyard. It's really painless and easy to do. I'm shocked, I'm sold, I love it.
Well, and there are the tumbler versions too, so if you don't have the grass to place it on, they're a little bit larger. And I don't think we have any kind of economic incentive tied to those, do we? It'd be nice if we did. See, I have no grass on my place, it's just all rock. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you have to bend over.
I like the direction, another way to get the word out on your blog.
Okay. And maybe something within the city itself, as far as city staff, you know, do we have something here that says, here's how we do it? Yeah, here's how the staff.
Very good idea.
That's the way.
For example, maybe city councilors could have a ceramic cup or something.
Yeah, some of us should.
I want one with an octopus too.
Well, we will then, what we'll do is proceed forth, and as we develop this into something more concrete on how we'll go forth, we'll just supply that information to you.
I would just suggest to add on the website, I know that'll be revamped at some time in the future and...
That would be, I think you could have some fun with that, Ron, with intergovernmental competitions or interdepartmental competition. I mean, it would be fun, and something you could highlight the good works of the city with. Very good. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. And I've lost my paperwork. Here we go. Sidewalk and overlay presentation.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and councilors. So, we have, this looks like it's longer than it really is, so, just because we have so many slides. So, we're going to do a presentation that shows you some of our sidewalk gaps, path, sidewalk path refinement plan, and our Highway 101 projects in progress right now, some traffic control changes that, that we'd like to have your approval on this evening. And then, we'll talk a little bit about funding. So, with that, we'll get started. Do you want to talk about the sidewalk gaps?
Sure. So, we identified all of the Highway 101 sidewalk gaps. These were the recommendations out of our transportation system plan, they were the highest recommendations from our public outreach, that people want to fill in the sidewalk gaps. Some of these are due-front undeveloped properties, some of them don't, but they've been gapped for a while, they've been unsidewarked for a while. So, we broke it up into 10 projects, and each of the sheets show sections, and these weren't any scientific groupings, they were just groupings and basically around a million dollars. Well, some of them are smaller, but as you go through each of the sections, we've identified the length, a total cost estimate, and takes us all the way from north to south. The total of the whole sidewalk gaps, if we were going to take that on right now, is about 4.12 million. We are going to have applications in for the state transportation funding projects for the 21-24 cycle, so that's the nearest, yeah, 2021-2024. So, that's the nearest, closest opportunity to get state funding for these sidewalk gaps. Then, we looked at outside 101, where our sidewalks could be, where our Head to Bay Trail could be. And we did a refinement plan based on pulling together the bike and ped plan, and our transportation system plan, and the Head to Bay Trail from the, from the master plan for the parks and rec. So, we started out with these projects that, again, these are proposed areas, they're high-volume streets, typically our collectors, and our high-volume local streets were the ones that the bike and ped plan recommended putting sidewalks on. And I want to say too, these aren't necessarily just curb-type sidewalks, these might be paths, these might not be the traditional sidewalk. So, we broke that up also into kind of groupings, and went from north to south in your presentation. Then, we looked at, or we presented, we also looked at the backbone of the Head to Bay Trail, where we've got it now, and that starts in section A, we put these into sections, A through F. And these are big-ticket items, these are not cheap projects. And so, these cost estimates are high, but I believe they're realistic. About $1 to $2 million for each of the sections of Head to Bay Trail. Then, you follow down there, keep going. So, this is what is in front of you, these are the street improvement and overlay projects on the next section is, sure.
Stephanie, before you leave that, we weren't planning on going through each of the projects unless you wanted us to, that's why we sent it out a little bit early. Do you have any questions associated with any of these projects or any of the sidewalk proposals that you're seeing?
Counselor.
Of course I do.
I saw the mic getting ready.
I know, my hint. I just, just because there's been so much attention in the north end of the city, on Logan Road especially, worried about the overflow of all the cars and the, and the pedestrian safety, I, and I didn't notice that Logan Road was on...
Deanna, that is on path project number one, that's our number one sidewalk and path project.
It is?
After the overall map that shows the Head to Bay Trail and Sidewalk Refinement Plan, first one is from, well, is Logan, from 50th all the way to the end.
Okay. Some kind of path or something, okay.
Right.
How did I miss that?
Is there heavy foot traffic there?
We blasted right through it probably, we went through this pretty quickly. Pardon?
Heavy foot traffic there?
Yep.
Oh, yes. There's heavy foot traffic, especially around the state park, there's parking issues, and really nowhere for people to walk, the shoulders are very narrow.
And then there's a ditch line, so it's...
It's not going to be easy.
No.
No, go ahead.
Just my question, so I can follow these.
Right.
Do we get numbers of pedestrians? Is it part of something that says, how do we know?
We don't take pedestrian counts, but during the bike and ped plan, there was a lot of public input, and a lot of the heavy-use sidewalk areas, the heavy-use pedestrian areas are also, again, in our collectors where we have a lot of traffic and pedestrian conflicts. So, these tend to run along the ocean or front-edge streets. And again, Logan, for example, did come up, got a lot of complaints, and where we have a collector's street such as Logan, but absolutely no place for people to walk, that's, that's where these really got honed in. But no, as far as actual counts, we haven't done that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, on, I don't have internet for some reason right now, so I've lost your, your Okay, on, I don't have internet for some reason right now, so I've lost your packet inclusion, but it just came up. Anyhow, my question is on Project 10, which is overlay sidewalks, parking at the Cultural Center. And I'm assuming, and that's the north side of the Cultural Center, I'm assuming.
Okay, so the first section we're on is the refinement plan for the sidewalks.
So, okay.
The Sixth Street is shown, well, it's taken from that refinement plan, and we've turned it into a project that we're going to present now.
Before you leave that, so one of the points that I wanted to mention is that what you're seeing here is the basis for capital improvement plans, planning. And so what you're looking in here are the things that we will look to over the next several years in trying to implement for sidewalks, if that's a, if that, you know, if that becomes a financial priority for the city.
My question about that particular project is, I'm just curious of what kind of parking you envision there, diagonal or parallel? I'm just...
We were looking at diagonal along that fence line. And then we were also looking at, let's see.
I'm not quite there yet. It's Project 10.
We were looking at sidewalk on the north side as well.
Thank you.
So we'll get a little more description of these projects, the next set of projects that we're recommending to go forward with.
But we also wanted to coordinate with the Cultural Center and their improvements that they're looking at.
So then the next overall map is 20 projects, 21 projects, actually.
Stephanie, Mr. Mayor, just to interrupt, one more kind of qualifier for me is, are these prioritized by 1, 2? You know, should I look at those as priorities?
No, not so far. I'm getting into the priorities right now. But the plan is no priority.
Okay, so right now they're just all the kind of where we need sidewalks and that kind of stuff. When you get to the priorities, is there criteria? I think the mayor was asking the number of pedestrians, but is there other kind of broad criteria you've used as you start thinking about which ones to do first?
Yes, I'll jump right into that. For example, Sixth, we, these then combine with our need to maintain our street condition. We have excellent, we have excellent streets compared. And one of the reasons we do have such, our streets are in such good condition is because we don't wait till they completely fall apart, spend a bunch of money to rebuild. A rebuilding of street is about $8 to $12 a square foot. Overlaying is $2 to $3 a square foot. So we're in a really good situation where when we've come back in this timeframe, for example, Sixth Street, Sixth Street does need an overlay. It's ready for an overlay. We do have some areas we need to dig out. It's also part of the Head to Bay Trail section. It's also in front of or next to the Cultural Center's plan to, and we very much want to connect that Head to Bay Trail, at least in this project up to Mast, and then have a crosswalk to get to the state park. So it's a whole, this just happens to be, and it's this one and 14th Street, where our overlays, then we look to, do we have a sidewalk plan to that? Do we have Head to Bay Trail work planned for that? That's certainly the time to do it. Or it's a good time to do it because obviously you get your contractor there and they're doing the whole thing.
So what I hear you saying, then you're matching up street repair or overlay, checking to see if we have a sidewalk to need there and getting that done. And that has a higher priority because we're doing more work than, you know, I keep thinking of the spaces from, say, some affordable apartments to grocery store. I have a tendency to look at those as how do people typically walk to the grocery store and do we have parking or sidewalk for them to do that or up to Safeway? So fixing the street would have the higher priority to do the sidewalk than the, my example, for example?
And it's combined with another project. I think the one that you're talking about is really those Highway 101 gaps. That's really where everyone is walking.
Yeah, it is.
And get to the highway, you know, a little bit safer than walking along the edge of the highway.
Right, so I guess that's the, so does Highway 101 gaps have higher priority than...
Some of our side streets.
Yeah. I mean, because we're looking at a lot of money here and it's going to be a budget decision.
Yeah.
And you pick the ones that, you know, are most critical, you know, for risk. And one of our projects on here is Northeast 14th Street and trying to tie that back to the Head to Bay Trail. There's quite a bit of foot traffic along that section. It's really busy.
So right now, so when I see your priorities, so you're going at least for doing more than one project on a street section. So it's, so that's okay. I just need to...
And I think when we get into the discussion of funding, that's a strategy we'll have to think about, is do we go after the state money for the state highway? Do we spend, do we spend city money on state highway? Because that clearly is what people, you know, see as the biggest need. We heard that overwhelmingly. I mean, you know, but we still have our side streets and that we need to take it up, too.
You mentioned the STIP, and I agree, you know, 21-24 is a long way out. People forget about how far in advance you have to plan. But the other is, you know, do not forget safe routes to schools because that's sidewalks and they're pumping a lot of money into that.
We are going to apply for that grant. We are super set up for the state, the Safe Routes to School grant this year because of the funding through the state. And that is not on here. One of the sidewalk projects, one of the projects that came out of that study, Ocean Lake Elementary, was sidewalks on 21st and Orr. So that's the project that's not on, not on the 21 list that we're going to go over right now, but that's a project for opportunity because the grants fit the criteria. We have the need, we have it identified, kind of an obvious one to go after. So on the overall, those are our projects. And the spreadsheet is a brief summary to show the cost of each one. And we've broken it up into hypothetically fiscal years. The first set of projects are ones that you have already approved and we are still working, you approved them last year for budget, and we're still working on the design. Well, we're working, yeah, it's in design or ready to go out for bid. So you will be seeing a street improvement project on Northwest 22nd from 101 to Keel. Though anytime we do a street improvement project, even an overlay, and we have curb ramps on the corners that aren't ADA compliant, we have to bring those up to ADA compliances. We also have some stormwater problems usually when we add sidewalks or fix a street. We're finding that there's a lot of storm issues that we have to take care of as well. The next street is Port Lane. You'll hear about that more tonight. We ask for a award of that. The next project is 29th Street. We're working on an overlay for Southwest 29th. We're going to add sidewalks to the north side. And again, there's a lot of stormwater problems in that street. The next one you'll hear tonight, too, asking for a construction award, is Northeast 68th and Northeast 69th. Those were in Roads End. They're very, streets are a mess. I mean, they're, they need to be rebuilt. Severe cracking. We're going to repair a lot of the severe cracking areas, and we're going to add a lot of storm improvements on both of those streets. Next ones we're working on are, you may notice the approaches on the highway in Northwest. We've got three really bad approaches on, what are they, 17th, 18th, and 19th?
They're actually on the east side.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
And those, we had those with quite a few other projects. Northeast, Northwest 22nd Street is one of the approaches that was so bad, and so we had to bring that whole intersection up to standard. And that was one of the first ones we did and where we put most of that money. But now we're doing the survey work on all of these, and so they include sidewalk ramps and then paving the crosswalks.
And then final, a couple more this year. We're still working on 21st from 101 to Harbor Northwest. Another street, another advantage when we do these is we're adding some parking on the side. So we're trying to narrow the streets down to add some traffic calming. We've had a lot of problems with speeding on 21st. We're also waiting for sewer money to repair sewer main line before we overlay that. And finally, we're looking at High School Drive, specifically the intersection at Highway 101. We're going to tee that, we're going to improve that so there's better sight distance and better turning radiuses for the buses.
Stephanie, is that going to also include that little chunk of sidewalk south of Theater West? There's no sidewalk there in the Nell Scott area to High School Drive? Is that somewhere...
It didn't include that, this particular project.
Is that somewhere...
That's in the gap, that's in the Highway 101 gaps, I believe.
Is that somewhere going to be addressed?
It's going to depend on priority on that one, but there is sidewalk in front of the theater, so Theater West down to 32nd.
But there's a chunk, you can't walk on either side of that road, east or west. There's no accessible sidewalk on either side.
And those are kind of the priorities we want to hear from you, you know, as a group.
That's number nine, I think that's project number nine we're talking about.
Is it nine?
Nine and 10.
I'm not going to go back to it.
Anyway, yes, so those are in the Highway 101 gap projects. So the projects that you'll see, a recommendation to the Budget Committee this year are for an overlay on Northwest Jetty. This is also in Roads End. The reason this came to the top is because there's a big hole, a big low spot, a large low spot in the road, and there's no storm line to take that water out. So it just, it just turns into a lake heel, I'm sure that's what they call it. So anyway, this also needs to be overlaid, too. So we're going to hit both of those problems. We're also recommending now back to Northeast Sixth Drive, where from the Highway 101 to Mast, this is a big, this is a big project. This is one of the expensive projects that's about $12 a square foot when we add the Head to Bay Trail. We may not be able to get eight to 10 feet the whole way, but we'll try to get as wide of a trail as we can.
I'm sorry, just so I can clear, you said you've got listed here as center frontage.
Along Cultural, I add sidewalks and parking along Cultural Center frontage. So our idea was to add the parking in front of the Cultural Center on Sixth.
Okay.
Where we have some pull-in parking right now. We're trying to see if we can keep that.
Is it, do I just have my building turned around? Is the frontage on Sixth, not Highway 101?
Well, I meant the side frontage, or side, the side of...
The north side.
The north side, yeah. So when we overlay the whole street, we'll go from right-of-way to right-of-way. Part of that right-of-way includes the parking along the side of the Cultural Center or the Sixth Street side of the Cultural Center.
Okay, I'm just having a hard time picturing. No, 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 I know where it's at. I'm just, as far as a priority, I'm just having a hard time recognizing that is more important than what we were just talking about, the Theater West bend, where you've got maybe a 12-inch shoulder to walk or ride a bike on. I don't know how that surpasses that.
Well, the reason it surpassed, well, the recommendations that are coming forward for this fiscal year are only on our side streets. We're not recommending any Highway 101 improvements other than, well, Third Street. We aren't recommending those sidewalk gaps. That's kind of up to you guys, like I said, if you want to spend, if we want to spend our city money on the highway versus on our side streets. The reason Sixth Street, the Sixth Street needs to be overlaid. So we looked at our criteria. Okay, it needs to be overlaid. What other improvements are planned for Sixth Street? The Head to Bay Trail, the Cultural Center parking. So that's that birthed to this project. It's because of opportunities and needs that came together. But it's completely up to you guys.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I guess I'm throwing my two cents in here, is I'm more concerned about the safety than the appearance and whether we could do some kind of just soft shoulder there rather than a sidewalk, based on the amount of foot traffic. I understand they have large influxes during an event, but it's in front of the parking already, and so they're sheltered. So I just think, so again, just my, I think it's a bigger need.
And we'll get into the funding part of it, too, in a little bit, so we can talk about 101.
So Northeast 13th, these are a few left of Ocean Lake, where we've done a lot of paving and improvements in Ocean Lake, but we still have a few streets that are cracking and need repair. So that's Northeast 13th and Northeast 15th, and we're not recommending anything except just the overlay. So those are relatively inexpensive, about $2 a square foot. The next is the other big project, if you will, that we're recommending, and that is on Northeast 14th from Orr to Highway 101. Now, this came as a priority, A, because it's our Head to Bay Trail proposed section, part of our trail. And we've had so many complaints of people really just having to jump into the ditch, you know, walking their dog because it's just, it gets a lot of conflicts and no place to walk, no refuge for pedestrians.
So this is just the first phase, and then you'd continue from Orr down to 22nd on West Ocean Lake Road.
Next project is Northeast 20th. Again, it's just a little bit of edge grinding, not too expensive. We just need to keep that road in good shape.
May I ask a question?
Please.
For this project, it said low-pressure sewer to serve properties that are currently on septic.
I just wanted to point out that that would be a street we would overlay and not have possibly later, it's not sewered. There's a section of it that's not sewored.
Is that something that we want to do with this?
It could be a reimbursement district if someone came forward. We wouldn't probably, we wouldn't pave it without doing that.
It's also, it also doesn't have sidewalks currently, and so we would probably be able to have sections that we could put a small pressure sewer alignment, you know, put the pressure line in outside of the pavement. But again, that's kind of one of those, I wanted to note, any of our overlays that don't have utilities, I just want to make a note of that and make sure we're aware. The next project, I know you'll probably all agree with this, well, I shouldn't say that, but this is a pretty damaged section of the road, and the buses use this. And, you know, a lot of people use it, so we want to go ahead and do a nice overlay.
When you say the buses use it...
School buses.
Right, but it's a pickup route for students?
No, they just, they just...
Turn around.
Turn around and use it, you know, as a road. But it gets heavy use.
Okay.
And it's by the skate park.
And it's really, it's in pretty bad shape. We'll do a few stormwater improvements with that, too. So that bundled up to, what was it, Lila, total of, let's see here. That brings us to the sort of second section, $1.26 million. Then we get into the next few years' priority. Again, following our criteria of the street needs to be overlaid and what improvements are planned for that street. Southwest Inlet, these are a couple of projects in Cutler City Inlet, just an overlay. We'll maybe try to widen the shoulders as much as we can. A lot of times, these are opportunities to add gravel and get a better path for people to walk on, not necessarily pave and put sidewalks in. Same with Southwest 14th. Same with Southwest 14th. It's a grind and overlay. There are some, it's, it's in pretty bad shape though. The next one is Northwest 16th.
Multiple street cuts on it.
Mm-hmm. Trying to widen the shoulders, try to fix the sight distance on Harbor and, and 16th. And then also with this grouping is Southwest 63rd Street on Cutler City. Again, just an overlay, we're not proposing to add sidewalks. And the next grouping, in high need too, is Southwest 16th, I guess we didn't get all the Ocean Lakes yet, from Harbor to Fleet. Oh, Southwest, yeah, yeah, that's just, yeah, Southwest 16th. That is, that street is, needs paved, needs, it doesn't get a lot of use, but it needs some treatment. Twenty fir-, uh, 51st is another street, we're putting that out in a future year because hopefully that will correspond with an improvement in Taft Park.
Also our water line.
I guess, and we need.
We have a 14-inch water line that has to be replaced.
Oh, that was gonna be my question.
And we're also hoping to add, well, with, in this case, we budget, we, we estimated that we would be adding sidewalks along that section too. Okay, so, that brings us to the highway projects that are in progress right now, already funded, and we're waiting for ODOT's blessing to construct, pretty much.
So, we have our Lincoln, Lincoln Square ADA improvements which are in front of this building and across to Burger King and then coming over to the front door of City Hall. And then we'll also be paving the parking lot downstairs, so we'll have to be, we'll be digging up the concrete that's cracking and replacing that with an asphalt surface. So, it's gonna be a difficult timing project as far as the store, library, City Hall. We're working on that, we're, and that's the one that, you approved an intergovernmental agreement for the city to include ODOT's ADA ramp improvements. And so, we haven't received their plans yet and we're still working on them, doing some signal design for us at Burger King, so that we have actually two crossings there and we think that that will help improve the safety of that intersection because people, quite a few people have been hit there, just trying to cross, so. In a lighted crosswalk.
Yeah.
Mark.
Signaled. We also went ahead and included the plans, we did this in-house with a survey and you can kind of see all the details that went into this. So, we would vastly improve the ADA route from Burger King to City Hall and the entrance to City Hall. So, that's what all those pages are, I'm gonna go through those. Our next plan, and this came again from the Transportation System Plan, our high priorities were to help people get across 101 with RRF, with rapid flashing beacons, some kind of, something else besides a non-signaled crosswalk. So, we looked at the, the crosswalk on Third Street, on South Third Street. It's, um, we can't put an RRFB on that north side where it is right now, the crosswalk is on, I'm sorry, yeah, the crosswalk's on the north side right now. We're proposing to move it to the south to put an island, a refuge island, and you can see, maybe point that out, Lila. And then turn Third Street into a plaza, essentially, walking and then connect it to the beach access on Third, which actually the city owns property right away, all the way to the bluff. So, we were gonna have a little beach viewing lookout. That's still in development, this is not budgeted, I shouldn't have said that, this is still in development. And again, it's because we were trying to put rapid flashing beacons on Third Street, you know, to help people get across there.
I'm having a hard time picturing this, I don't know why.
This plan doesn't go to the whole, it doesn't, see, yeah, it, it just shows, this was what we sent to ODOT because they don't care what we're doing on the other sides. This is just the changes that would be in 101. So, we would bring the RRFBs down to the south side of that intersection. And then really, there would be no traffic except, you know, you could still come in and turn into the storage place, but part of that would be just pedestrian only.
South side.
Yeah, just behind, behind the, your building.
Right, right. All right, all right, thank you.
Yeah, we might have to bring back a, a full, full picture.
We just wanted to get ODOT's first, they had, they have a lot of, couple processes when we do these. And so, this first one is just a concept of, yes, they would consider us moving the crosswalk to the south side.
Takes us a long time to get through permitting with them.
It is, it is. So, then, the other thing we do have, we wanted to talk about, so people know, we did get a STIP award and we're working on a path.
Sorry, what's a STIP?
Oh, I'm sorry, state-funded project.
Okay.
This is one we put in for a grant.
Got it.
And, and we were partnering with the Solets Tribal Group on this one. And so, they're, they're putting up some funding and then we're putting up some for the intersection.
Okay, great.
Improvement at West Devil's Lake Road, so this would greatly improve, so this is Highway 101 and West Devil's Lake Road intersection and then the path goes along to Niyatu.
So, we're designing this in-house with.
Post office.
You know.
But it's also, you know, a lot of folks that live in Niyatu and, and also people that are walking from Otis.
Oh, it's dangerous.
That is.
At least gets it to the Niyatu. And I think the project, I might have to stop back here just because of the funding, so we're not gonna make it probably all the way to Niyatu, but I think they're, I think ODOT's looking at that as well.
I would love to see something, if, I think we've talked about it just briefly as a council about the speed limit there. You know, it sure would be nice to tie something or send to ODOT and say, we would love to see that, at least I would, I would love to see that drop down to 35 there. I see no reason to be going 45 miles an hour through there.
I agree.
Actually, ODOT is working on that because they have received an organized citizen complaint from the, from a group in Niyatu that feel it's just too difficult to pull out of that intersection with the sight distance and the speeds. So, that is on their radar and.
Well, past faith Baptist, that whole corridor, see no reason for that to be that fast.
That actually, I think, needs a, a signal, so people can get out of the post office. That's dangerous. Should've been a signal.
Well, that is what that group that talked to me would like to propose. They want, they would like ODOT to start a study to warrant a traffic signal or at least see if traffic signals or lower speeds are warranted.
Yay.
And, and not particular intersections, actually, in the county. And so, if we stop the project at that left side, that's kind of where our city limits.
County line.
But we're still, we're still involved in designing the project and, you know, coordinating it.
Yeah, we just had a fatality there.
And all of you approved us going forward with this, this grant, probably a year and a half, two years ago.
At least. We're still working on the intergovernmental agreement.
Actually, it was when I was mayor.
Yeah.
Four years ago.
Oh, brother.
Stephanie, so, how about Phase Two of that to take it all the way to Logan Road? Is that at least on the list?
Yes, that's a sidewalk gap, that was on the first.
On the gap, thank you.
So, these are three things that we'd like to see in action taken this evening, so if you approve of these, that we could actually do these stop, stop signs at the intersections. So, this is Northeast 14th and Northeast Orr Avenue. And it's, you know, where the roads used to kind of switch and go into the county road, which is now city. And we get some really, we're getting so much more traffic in that section. We put out our speed signs and, you know, monitored the speeds and people are racing to the light now. There's just so many more people going this direction and there's no, that's why we had it in there for one of the sidewalk projects on city streets because it was, you know, there's no shoulder at all.
Now, I like, of course, the, the cost of stop signs is relatively minor.
Right.
But, as I've said before, I've become a fan of roundabouts. Is that something that could be looked at eventually for that spot?
I don't think that we have, that, we don't have the property, for one thing.
Okay.
So, I, I kind of highly doubt that. And this road has been taken down, lowered as much as it can be and the signal was put up, kind of like the Niyatu intersection, just to warn people of the intersection. And then we tried to do no left turns and that didn't seem to work real well. So, this would be like 22nd Street next to Ocean Lake School where we just put in that plaza and the four-way stop, so it'd have a similar effect. And we have complaints from people on 14th, we have complaints from people on Orr and 13th and 12th. So, we've had quite a few studies completed and these were in the traffic study that we had done by the, I think it was Portland University, it's all the engineering.
Well, actually, that was our, our TSP, Transportation System Plan consultants recommended that this be a four-way and they did the warrant, the counts for it, so I've got the justification.
And a quick question too about police presence. Do we ever discuss that in terms of these things?
Oh, we always do.
Okay. We've, I've now heard three different things tried and failed, but have we increased patrols there? Do we have?
Yes, what we do with our traffic signals, you know, they, they count the speed that everyone is going and the time of day and so the police will go to those areas and, and keep an eye.
But has it, has it, has it had an effect?
Not on the street. I don't believe it's helped. And the people that complain, complain to the police as well as us.
Is this at the top of the hill?
Yes. And then the other one that we have is Southeast Third Street and Southeast Second Place. And we've, we've had quite a few complaints in this area and there was a stop sign there on Third Street in the past and I'm not sure how it disappeared, but.
So, there's already three stops and we would turn that into a four.
And then the other one is Southwest 24th Drive where Coast Avenue and Olivia Beach meet at that intersection and it's, people just drive right through that stop sign. There's a stop sign on the, on this right side. This is existing, so these would be the additions.
Well, yeah, at the bottom of the hill too. It's, it's just, it's a freeway.
Well, even, and even with the stop signs.
Yeah.
You have stop signs.
They're just ignored. But I think part of that is, you know, what, I remember back when I was on planning, we were talking about sight lines and this and that. And I think, well, at least what I'm learning is the greater the sight line, the less they stop. And you start decreasing that sight line, they have to stop to make sure they're not gonna get it. But when you've got it wide open like at the top and the bottom of Coast, they can see a quarter mile and just off they go. Well, a quarter mile's a lot, but.
Nice new asphalt.
Yeah, yeah.
So, one of the funding sources that we have is the $2 million from the HB 2017 and we haven't seen any paperwork agreements or anything on that quite yet, but the city would receive in the, they're saying 1719, that we would receive $185,000. And then 19 to 21, we get $349,500. 2021 to 23, $434,000. 23 to 25, $516,000. And then the last one, 25 to 27, $546,000, for a total of $2,31,500. And so, that is one of our questions to you is, do you want to save up a couple of years of that money and do one larger project? You know, how, how would you like to spend that money? And we have, that's why we brought you all of these projects as well and kind of gave you our priority. But it's, you know, it's spread out over a fairly long period of time and so it would, could be one that, that we look at in a few different ways. You know, we could just include it into our funding and I have not seen any paperwork on this yet, so I know, I know Counselor Anderson is, might be more aware of where that stands than, than we do.
I would want to see it. I, I, you're on the right track until you see it. But you're not talking about these, these three projects.
No, no.
You mean for, add, add to our funding art.
Right. It could be, you know, sidewalk on 101. It could be, you know, some larger projects. It could be pave, it could be paving Bard Road.
Yeah.
Question concerning Southwest, Southwest 29th. It's 27, 18, 1718 moved to 1819, but it's not in the green. Is it still?
Because we, we had it funded in, in 1718.
And then a question on that, and I know I'm coming really late to the party on this one, but I drive that almost daily. It is such a goofy corner and you've got, the south side is wide, the north side is narrow, the houses are built right up to it and the cars that park on their own property jut out into it and it, and it's this odd S. Is it because of the realignment and the, the, what do you call it, the big pipe that had to be for the creek and is that why that was never straightened out?
It was, it was built that way and it was, the.
There was an opportunity to straighten it.
We are, we're gonna widen it, we're gonna add some parking and we're gonna add a sidewalk and we're gonna fix the storm.
Where would parking go?
There's a lot, a few places on the south side.
Where?
Well, we're gonna widen it. We're gonna widen the pavement.
You've still got the creek there and the culvert and.
Yeah, it'll be right on that edge, so people can kind of pull off and.
Okay, it, it's very dangerous.
Yeah.
And that's a well-used path out of Olivia Beach on the weekends.
Yeah, we, we wouldn't be able to do anything at the highway, except that part of the project's done, but further, further west.
And we're, and that does include some improvements on the intersection with Coast because we've got a lot of slumping on Coast too, so there is part of that.
Some paving.
Yeah, is some additional paving and kind of.
What is slumping?
Widening of that intersection and making 29th more aligned.
It's sinking.
Sinking, okay.
The road, the roadbed is bad and so we'll have to dig that out and then we'll repave it.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Throughout here, you mentioned stormwater improvements and I was just wondering if we yet have a stormwater master plan? I mean, we're making improvements as we go along?
Yes, we, we always have. And it, and it's like the project in Rhodes End that's, that's so bad.
But are we still working on a stormwater master plan?
Yes, yes.
And is that gonna come along in alignment with these things, so they fall into place or how is that gonna work?
You know, a lot of times, when we have a functioning storm system in our stormwater master plan and there's no curb and sidewalks, for example, there's a lot of areas like that. We don't have it in our stormwater master plan to do anything unless we add curbs and sidewalks. And then we have to look at where the catch basins are, where the low, low spots are and make sure things actually flow once we get the curb and sidewalk in. So, those are why you see a lot of these stormwater needs is because we're adding curb and sidewalk. The stormwater master plan will identify the areas where there are no storms, storm systems. And then we can decide if we want to improve that street, we do need to add storm. Sometimes we won't need to add storm. So, the, the master plan will show where the areas we need to add storm.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I think we had at one time talked about when that would be completed, can you remind us when that will be?
A couple of months, we'll have the draft, I believe.
We're looking by the end of June, if I recall.
Oh, okay.
We'll, we'll finish it up and all these will be in there too.
A question on a project, I think I spoke with you, Lila, a year or so ago, you know, I've got that property on South. know, I've got that property on Southwest Forty-Eighth. We have drains on the south side, yet all the water goes to the north side of Forty-Eighth and ends up in my parking lot. And in that drain and in the, and in the, in the mobile home park behind me where they have a lake.
That's actually one of our highest priority projects in that stormwater master plan. And really, um, the line goes under the trailer park, the mobile home, Taft Mobile Home Park, and then out toward the tide gate. And so, that project is one of the, it's the highest priority in that list. But we'd probably have to go from increase the culvert in Forty-Eighth Street and then take it down inlet, um, all the way to an outlet at Schooner Creek.
Right, I remember we talked about that.
So, have to be an entirely new piping system.
But there's no plans for it to happen other than it's a high priority?
It's in the stormwater master plan. So, so that has to be funded.
But we haven't identified a, a time which that will be and we haven't identified the funding.
Thank you for interpreting what I was trying to say.
But, but we do clean it out and unfortunately.
No, and I get that and I'm not complaining about that, but.
It's a very, it's a large project.
Since last year, we had to close the street because it was just completely, it was a lake.
That's historic, it's the first thing we look at.
Right, it was king tide and, and, and the rains of that week, but, yeah.
Well, in the tide gate, when we have the high tides and we have the, the large rains, the twenty-five-year storms, it closes the, the high tide closes the tide gate and then everything backs up.
Right.
So, it's, it's an issue. And we were looking at a pump system to pump water from one side when the tide gate is full to the other side. So, we have quite a few different engineering options that we're looking at.
Okay, thank you.
Ideally, taking, putting a new pipe in on inlet and taking it all the way to an outfall that's existing would, would be the best plan.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Lila, um, my, my question is this, the sheet that was in the plan, a nice list of the projects. But when I look at the already budgeted ones, four of those projects, you know, are getting moved to this next fiscal year.
Right.
So, that tells me out of the eight projects, four got done. So, I'm, it's a question of, the money may be there, but the, the ability to do the projects isn't there?
The, the permitting by ODOT is not in place. And so, that's why we moved quite a few of those. And then, and then also we had the issue for the sewer on Twenty First Street.
Yeah. So, as we move into nineteen, or eighteen nineteen and load that up, you know, that goes from seven projects to eleven? Or if my math is right. So, the, I guess I'm, I'm wondering again, the feasibility of time and productivity being able to really do that. So, as you, as you re-look at this, um, that's also why I'm pushing for, you know, don't spend the state money until you get it type of thing. Just let it come into the budget annually and add to your.
Okay.
Projects.
And then just so I'm clear, you're asking us for approval on nine through fifteen?
Um, no, we're just asking for approval of the stop signs.
Okay, and that's all tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And then, and then of course, the budget will.
Got it, okay.
Next Monday night, we'll assess all of this too. So, we just wanted to get it in front of you.
Simple-minded person, I'm sorry.
So, I'd make the motion, Mayor, to, you know.
I'm sorry, Mr. Patillo?
Just under our code, uh, traffic control by the city council is typically done by resolution. So, we don't have resolutions prepared for this traffic control this evening. So, I, if you do a motion, maybe it's to bring back resolutions that do that.
That would be my motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I'd second that.
Motion to second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much. Very informative, way to keep all, I don't know how you keep it on track.
You'll be able to, uh, you know, keep taking a look at this too and help you make up your minds which, which areas you want us to go with.
No, thank you. And I like the way that was embedded in the, uh, the, the agenda with that Dropbox. That was very nice.
So, it won't come up now.
Oh, well. I, I appreciate it.
We want to give a, a shout out to, to Terry Chamberlain. He's our, our senior engineer and he put a lot of the, a lot of work into the head debate trail and sidewalk plan and studying all of that.
Good, okay, thank you very much. That is the last of the presentation, yeah? Public, it was. Public hearing ordinance, nothing, ordinance is nothing, resolution is nothing. We are tabling the real property lease, Northeast Port Lane, street improvement award revised.
Okay, I'll launch into that project. Last council or two council meetings ago, we came to you with, um, a project that we had designed on Northeast Port Lane. The proposal for that project was to put a small traffic circle, um, and in the project and council was more comfortable with us going to the, the residents and having a public meeting and really talking about the design elements and how this would function for everyone. So, on April eleventh, we did have that meeting. There were some suggested changes and we are going to incorporate those in the design. The traffic circle's going to be smaller, about ten to twelve feet in diameter. And then we're going to put some raised islands, um, to make sure traffic stays pointed to the side of the circle they need to go around. So, it'll guide people so they won't be able to jump and go across the, the street. So, we're asking to go ahead and award that project tonight. The lowest bid was Road and Driveway. Their amount was seventy-four thousand three hundred and forty dollars and forty-three cents. We're asking for a twenty percent construction contingency because we haven't redesigned that circle yet. We haven't talked to Road and Driveway on the cost of those changes. So, just to be sure, um, we're asking for a total amount of eighty-nine thousand two hundred and forty dollars and forty-three cents. And the budget was a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes.
There are white lines on the pavement now. It's my understanding that the traffic circle will be smaller than that circle.
The white lines were for twenty-foot diameter and we're going to go down to about ten, maybe eleven, twelve.
I've been trying to go around the circle and it's not very easy.
We are going to widen the pavement that, there too, on the east, on the west side. So, but yeah, it's, it was, it was.
Be a little smaller.
It'll be a little smaller, yeah.
And we, we'll go back out and paint it again. The weather just didn't allow us.
Oh.
Just so you can get a feel for it.
And this is just kind of a general, did you have a question?
Yes.
Go ahead, please.
Mine was a comment. I just wanted to say that I attended that public meeting that you held for this and it was very well done. It, I mean, you listened and you changed the design. And when people were very upset in the beginning and really, really worried, they left happy and heard. And anyway, thank you for that.
So, my question is, have we talked to the public arts committee? Because I think these are excellent places for public art.
The, um, actual circle will be a compass. And, and that area is called Compass Point. And so.
Do you have to be standing on it to look at it? Well, I understand that, but I hope they're not looking at it while they're driving around in a circle. What I'm asking for is something. Well, what I'm asking for is something in the center of this circle that can be seen.
That, that's where it would be.
We.
You mean something that is not flat on the.
Yeah. Yeah, oh, it has, it, it has to be flat.
Perpendicular.
It has to be flat because people, the fire trucks, garbage trucks, people with larger vehicles need.
Is it that small?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, all right, well then, my apologies. All right. Okay, fair enough.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make the motion to approve, um, the construction contract be awarded to Road and Driveway Company in the amount of seventy-four thousand three hundred and forty dollars and forty-three cents with a construction contingency of fourteen thousand nine hundred, uh, which is twenty percent of the bid, um, for a total of eighty-nine thousand two hundred and forty dollars and forty-three cents.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. Hearing none, um, we need a roll call, please.
Walkie.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hinton.
Yes.
And Casper.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you both very, very much.
Thank you. We also have Sixty-Eighth and Sixty-Ninth.
We got, yeah. I'm sorry?
We have Sixty-Eighth then.
Oh, that's right, that's right. I even have a note about that. Thank you. No, I even made a note about it, but, all right.
So, Mr. Mayor, my, my question was simply the math, trying to figure out where the money comes from. And I, I come, you're short, twenty, thirty thousand dollars?
Mr. Mayor, I could probably answer that one.
I knew somebody would.
Yeah, there's, there's something that was not included in that. So, there's two projects that we've had that have come in under budget. The first one that you just approved is Port, which came in sixty-one thousand dollars under budget. And Northeast Twenty Second Street, which is coming in at a hundred and five thousand dollars under budget. Uh, so they would be able to cover the, we budgeted two hundred thousand dollars for this project. Two hundred thousand, yeah, two hundred thousand. So, uh, that would give us, that's sufficient to cover the cost.
That'll do it.
What was the project besides Port?
Northeast Twenty Second.
Question on that, if I may. When we have them coming in under budget, who gets the kudos on that? Is this the, the company doing the work and will we? It's the same people who get the blame when it goes. Well, I would sure like to know about that and make sure that we do recognize that and that the people out in the audience know that and recognize that.
I, I tell you, Road and Driveway is very good to us. They've given us good bids and they're competing with companies from the valley, but they've always gotten us very good bids and do very good work, so.
Yeah, and I think that's information that's important that we know. And well done on your staff too, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I might add one other thing that I think is important to note. So, that when we put together the budget, it has a detail of the different projects and you might see several projects that are in one line item, but it's broken out with several. So, when we come in under budget on one, the reason we don't have to do any kind of a budget amendment is because it's all contained within one line item. So, we track it both ways, both on the individual project and that the project's a total for the budget. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd, I'd make the recommend, recommendation to approve and award the, uh, this contract to CG Contractors LLC in the amount of two hundred and seventy-six thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars with a contingency, construction contingency of twenty-seven thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars, which is ten percent of the bid for a total of three hundred and four thousand three hundred and six dollars.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Williams.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hinton.
Yes.
Casper.
Yes.
And Walkie.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Uh, City Manager, City Attorney reports. I don't have anything. I'll be darned. Oh, kudos. All right, actions, if any, based on work session or executive session. I just, I wasn't clear, do we, is this now the time to discuss the eval? Yeah, we, we made it through the final process, I'm sure exactly. Okay, uh, just to let the public know, we finished the evaluation of our city attorney and we are very satisfied with, with his performance and we thank him for being part of this team. Uh, action, da, 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 we didn't have anything. Uh, additional comments from citizens present on non-agenda items. Non-agenda items, okay, seeing none. And announcements or comments by city council.
Just have mine. Mine's fun. I, um, I participated in the garage sailing, um.
Madness.
At the community days. Um, and I chose one and I went to the cert-sponsored one, which was fun. I'm always looking to help my husband fill up our, um, blue emergency kit bins. And we bought some, um, raffle tickets and we put them all in one bucket. And we won, um, a tabletop barbecue to go into our emergency kit. Yay!
Anybody else?
I have, um, a couple of things. One of the items on the ballot that you will start receiving, well, they'll be mailing on Thursday, is a, um, measure for Lincoln County Public Safety, Measure twenty-one one eighty-six. And I wanted to let everyone know that on Thursday, um, the twenty-sixth this week, from one-thirty to four, up at Ace's Sports Bar and Grill at the Chinook Winds Golf Course, Sheriff Landers will be available to answer any of your questions about this measure. My other item is I have been asked about Uber and Lyft in Lincoln City. And what, I don't know the status of those companies and, um, what needs to happen.
I think I'd asked that a while ago and Riley was the, he had the answer. He says, nobody's applied, as far as I know, to even begin something like that here. Am I, you know anything, Mr. Attorney? Yeah?
I'd have to follow up on it.
Okay, if you could check on the status, what needs to be done, what? Thank you.
Isn't that one of the few where we actually have a license?
The answer is yes.
Yeah, we, we license taxi services.
Right, right.
Versus a business tax or.
Yeah, that seems one of those things that would be a great opportunity for someone to pick up some side income.
And what I understand is taxi drivers have, if taxi service stops, then they could still be Uber or Lyft drivers. Extra income for the drivers and extra hours for people who aren't driving.
My son did it for, for about a year in Portland and spoke highly of it. Especially now that they allow tips.
Yeah.
Lyft, Lyft did, but Uber didn't, but now they do, so. Okay. Yes, please.
Yes, tomorrow, Tuesday, the League of Women Voters is holding a, um, debate for the commission candidates at the Atonement Church in Newport at six-thirty is a meet and greet and seven o'clock will be the debate.
Tomorrow?
For the candidates, yes.
I have just a couple of things, um, and I don't want to be a big discussion tonight, but it's, Ron, you, I think you've spoken to Mr. Stacy Baird about people using the edge of his property as a restroom basically along the beach there. Um, I told him I would mention it and that we, and figure a discussion or you bring us into it or.
Just brought again to my attention tonight. Um, it's a trespassing issue and so I will follow up with our police department and then we'll give you a report back.
And a public health, obviously too, because of what's going on on the property.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, second, um, I was at, we had our, uh, opening game on K-one, uh, over the weekend at Curtis and it was wonderful. Field was perfect, um, and really appreciated. But I did have a couple of coaches come and talk to me about K-two, I guess is the smaller of them for the little kids, uh, whatever. But that the condition of the dugouts and, uh, wind and, and rain protection. Someone could look into that. And then last, I think I sent you a letter and I haven't heard back yet about Dallas. And we talked about the garage sale ordinance, I think, last year.
Um, I had talked to them about it and they didn't send it and I kind of got lost track of it, so, um, I, I need to get ahold of them again today. I wasn't able to do it over the weekend, so.
And this is a refresher, I think I brought it up because I'd been to Dallas last summer and they have an ordinance where they provide the signs and, for a fee along with the permit. And it was, it was actually attractive. And, uh, just one of those things, you know, I'm not big on the government getting too involved, but especially after this last weekend, uh, most folks have done a good job of taking down their signage. Uh, and it wasn't too bad, but it's something to think about.